Starting, all attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good morning, everyone. Good to see my colleagues, even if at this distance. We are beginning our meeting, and as always, we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise to join me. I pledge allegiance to the
United States of America,
and to your public, for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. Our meeting begins with public participation.
Excuse me, Chair Taylor?
Yes.
I should do an attendance roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry, Al. Thank you very much. And Al, just so you know, when we go to public participation, I'll ask you to call from the current list because I did not that print it out.
I think I did will be doing that, Al.
Oh, okay.
Oh, oh, okay. All right, so I'll now do an attendance roll call. Chair Taylor?
Here.
Vice Chair Locas?
Here.
Erin Benham?
Here.
Bonnie Burr?
Here.
Okay, Eric Clemens will not be joining us for this meeting. Andrew Boz Walton?
Here.
Elwood Exley? Mr. Exley? Okay, I'll go back to him.
Yes, here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Donald Harris?
I'm here.
Hi, Mr. Harris. Okay, you're here for now. Thank you. Is Dr. Gates here for Marco Jakian?
Here.
Thank you, Dr. Gates. Thank you. Martha Prue?
Yeah.
Will Dariasco?
Here.
Malia Seavy?
Here.
Thank you. Robert Trefai?
Here.
Thank you. That concludes the attendance roll call.
Thank you. We'll now turn to public participation. Ashi, will you just announce people for us? And you've got the control of the mic and the camera.
Yes. Thank you, Alan. Our first speaker is Megan Hatch-Giri. Megan, I'm going to unmute you, and then you should be able to unmute yourself and speak. Go ahead, Megan.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Good morning, everybody. My name is Megan Hatch-Giri. I am the 2020 Connecticut Teacher of the Year, and I teach English at Woodland Regional High School in Region 16. I have had the great privilege of working on the Black and Latino curriculum that is being presented to you today. Thank you to Commissioner Cardona for recommending me to the committee and to all of the incredible and brilliant individuals who have worked so diligently and generously, much of the time throughout a pandemic, to devise and develop the curriculum, especially to Dr. Benjamin Foster, David Canton, Ygrid Kennedy, Peta Jarman Smith, and our legislators, Representatives Gibson and Sanchez, and Senator McCrory. Thank you for your leadership on the issue. Finally, thank you to the students, the brave, bold, and passionate students who have informed the writing and who have participated in their democracy in order to bring this work to fruition. You give us all great hope for the future. I have learned so very much from all of these folks, and I am proud and grateful to have played a small role in the vibrant and vital work, and vital it most certainly is. Black history is American history. Puerto Rican history is American history. Latinx history is American history, and it is high time that all of our schools in Connecticut taught it as such. Our Black and Brown students need and deserve to see themselves represented in the building of this nation, in its successes, achievements, and contributions. And our white students need and deserve to learn, appreciate, and respect that, too. This curriculum honors that. This curriculum honors the wishes of students across the state to learn more about their place in our nation's narrative, the beautiful, rich, complex, and multifaceted tapestry of their identity. This curriculum also tells the whole truth. It does not whitewash the ugly, the brutal, the unjust, the criminal, or the shameful parts of our collective story. It attempts rather to contextualize the history in a more complete, honest, and nuanced way than is typically taught in traditional American history courses. As a teacher, I am excited, encouraged, and eager to continue this work once it enters our classrooms. As public educators, the vital role that we play in our students' lives is vital to shaping a healthy, functional, and more equitable democracy. In order to do that, we need to be bold, think big, and teach what's hard. We need to have courageous conversations, and I truly believe this curriculum will facilitate those, while also providing supports, necessary supports, for teachers as they work to navigate them. Connecticut should be incredibly proud to be one of the pioneers on this journey. This is a curriculum that lets all of our children know that they are seen, that they matter, and that their identity is central to the identity of this country. This curriculum is an important and necessary step toward equity, toward providing all of our students with an equitable education, with an opportunity to learn the full and true story of our past, so that they are better equipped to strengthen and improve our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The second speaker is Leah Russell. Leah, I'm going to unmute you now.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me speak today, and Megan did a beautiful job saying why this is so important and necessary, and I just wanted to... Oh, I'm also speaking with regards to the African-American, Black, Puerto Rican, and Latino courses studies. I believe you've received my written statement, so I'll keep it very brief. I have been involved in this as a member of the public and a mother who really wants to see this happen and done well. I am also a videographer, and I was asked to help document the process. And so I attended as many meetings as I could. Every meeting that I could, I attended out of personal interest, but also to help document it. And I was so impressed with the way the CIRC team handled it, at the way everybody came together. It was really an incredible, incredible process. And so I'm just coming on today to say how much this matters to me and how excellent the curriculum is and how I want to see it carried forward. And, you know, I see this as just the beginning, and I hope that it will continue and grow. But the passion that everybody who is involved brought to it was just amazing, and I think it comes through in the product. And so I'm... Really, that's all I'd like to say is how impressed I am, and thank you for letting me come on and say.
Thank you.
Dr. Elsa Nunez from Eastern Connecticut State University has submitted a written statement. The next speaker is Dr. Benjamin Foster. And I will be unmuting him momentarily. Go ahead, Dr. Foster.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead. Good morning.
Good morning to all of you. To the members of the Board of Education, to Commissioner Cardona. I started the movement that led to the 912 legislation. I would be remiss if I did not recognize one of your members, Donna Harris Jr., who was an early supporter of this initiative, along with Dr. James Thompson. And I see my good friend, Dr. James Gates, Jane Gates, who also attended our first organizing meeting. We held the first organizing meeting at the Bloomfield Board of Education in October 2018. Dr. Stephen Armstrong represented the State Department of Education. And I salute Laura Steffin for her assistance with the legislation early on. In the interest of time, I'm here to request that you approve the curriculums that have been submitted to you by CIRC. I contributed in gratis to the design and development of the African-American Black Studies Curriculum Content. I have over 40 years of experience in teaching, education, and public administration. I have devoted my adult life to studying history and multicultural studies. We began this movement in the recognition of 400 years of African-American tenure in these United States. We are painfully aware that although being the second pioneer group in this nation, little is known of the stupendous contribution that African-Americans have made to this nation. As a former principal of both comprehensive and technical high schools and district coordinator of social studies, I am cogently aware that cross-cultural awareness positively impacts students' self-esteem, academic, and behavior outcomes. The curriculums are not presented in the victimization mode. No, this body of knowledge addresses the negatives and positives from a historical conceptual frame of reference using primary and secondary documents. It informs our students that all mankind are members of the human race, that we have a common ancestry, that all mankind has contributed to civilization. In short, the curriculum dispels the false narratives of the subhumanness and deficit model analysis of Black and Brown people. But let me hasten to add, these curriculums are not the panacea for the structural inequities and racism in our state and nation, and must not be presented as such. However, as a former chairman of the Education Committee, Connecticut State NAACP, for nearly a decade, I can state without fear of contradiction that parents and students have long wanted to have this curriculum content presented to their children, but it must be taught properly. Many of our teachers themselves have not taken African-American, Latino, Puerto Rican study courses. You must ensure that our teachers are provided professional development with historians who have in-depth knowledge of the subject matter and practitioners who fully comprehend and implement the curriculums. We must utilize the Connecticut State Colleges and University System to ground and enhance our teachers with ongoing professional development. In approving the matter before you, Connecticut joins other forward-leaning states that recognize the need for curriculum in the 21st century. Central Connecticut State University, the flagship for teacher education, stands ready and willing to assist teachers with this knowledge to teach the course effectively.
I need to remind you, sir, that your time is up, so please conclude as soon as possible.
I'm concluding. Through some institutes and ongoing professional development, I close by saluting longtime state educational employee, Dr. Agnes Quinones, for her role in developing Latino curriculum content. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Dr. Foster.
The next speaker is Adrian Solis. Adrian, please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Adrian. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Go ahead.
So, good morning. My name is Adrian Solis, and I am a social studies teacher at Henry Abbott Technical High School in Danbury, Connecticut. I'm here to share my experiences and hopes for the African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino Course of Studies. As an integral member of the Puerto Rican-Latino Content Development Committee, I work closely with other members in organizing topics, writing units, and developing activities for lessons. I currently teach a Latino Studies class of my own, where I have tested several activities and explored materials we have gathered for Semester Two of this course. The feedback I have gotten from students has been exciting and inspiring. For example, on a lesson covering Indigenous Americans, students said, quote, "It is important to understand where us as Latinos come from and our identity. Overall, learning about these Indigenous people really inspired me more because I can consider myself as Indigenous. Even though I don't follow the same lifestyle as them, I still believe that learning about them can make a difference," end quote. Another student wrote, quote, "This information we have been learning has to be taught to more people so that they can be proud of our cultures because most of it is influenced by the Indigenous cultures. The contributions of these Indigenous groups to the world are way more than they are credited for. People have to realize that we are valued more than what they have made us think throughout the years," end quote. During a class discussion on race and Latino identity, students opened up to me as I've never experienced in my 12 years of teaching. The lesson was real, exposed, raw, and therapeutic. I related so much with what the students were saying. Their stories and opinions were heartfelt and honest. It became a moment of pure reflection and growth. Throughout my tenure of teaching, I have never experienced such high and intense emotions after concluding a class. This course has the capacity to expose and share our fears, anxieties, and private thoughts in a safe space, allowing us to move forward as better people together. I can only imagine what a complete year of an African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino class will do for our Connecticut high school students, especially our students of color, who will finally be able to see themselves in the curriculum on a regular basis. The hope is that this course can become a pathway of learning that can serve as a foundation or supplement for the future education of our youth across the state. It has the potential to have a positive academic impact by creating a more informed citizenry for everyone involved. This course isn't just for Black or Latino students. It is for every single community member that is connected to this class. All kinds of students, teachers, administrators, parents, and relatives will learn empathy and gain a new perspective and appreciation for how the history of our state and country has been shaped and impacted by Black and Latino people. Thank you so much for your time and fervent approval of this course and professional learning to support its implementation.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jennifer Koutai. Jennifer, please go ahead.
My name is Jennifer Koutai, and I am one of the parents who signed the 10-4B complaint on behalf of special education families in Greenwich, Connecticut. I am also a founder of the SEAC, as well as a member of the PTA. I have tirelessly devoted myself to advocating for special needs children after my daughter was denied a free and appropriate public education and suffered permanent damage due to sheer neglect at the hands of Greenwich Public Schools. I am here today, taking time away from my job and my family, to ask you, how in the world did you dismiss this complaint? What efforts did you make to even launch an investigation into the claims put before you? In particular, in February 2020, prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, three teachers spoke publicly and stated, quote, "Over 1,000 hours of mandated services were not and are not provided." Additionally, in one of the strongest allegations, the president of the GEA said, quote, "Educators have been directed to persuade parents to make changes to their children's IEPs. As you are no doubt aware, this is a clear violation of the IDEA and the process for developing IEPs for students." Unfortunately, these allegations are not new to Greenwich Public Schools. They have a long history of conducting reviews and audits of special education practices performed by outside agencies dating back as far as 1997. And in all of those reports, none of the recommendations have ever been followed. Currently, there is yet a seventh review going on, which is further evidence of the Board's refusal to act on any prior audits. PCG, who has been hired to conduct this review, has stated they were not brought in to make any changes to the district's policies and procedures. They also informed parents that if they were asked to enforce their recommendations, it would take them three to five years to enact change. Despite having clear, credible evidence that special education services were not being provided as set forth in IEPs, the Board failed to take any action, and neither did the State Department of Education. This is concerning, disturbing, and disgraceful. What lies in the balance are the futures of thousands of students who are in dire academic risk. I literally cannot understand how you sleep at night. When did it become okay to subordinate the needs of vulnerable children to protect one's reputation? This must stop here and now. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mabel Balestra. Mabel?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Thank you, members of the Board and Commissioner Cardona, for this opportunity to speak. I am Mabel Abtiaga Balestra, the parent of an eighth grader in the Greenwich Public Schools. My son has blindness, seeing only through legally blind tunnel vision in his left eye, and also has ADHD. A nine-year member of his PPT team since preschool, the annual struggle to get him his IEP accommodations and services continues. Despite a very robust and detailed IEP, it's never been fully implemented. We pick our battles and keep the peace, a story unfortunately more widespread than not. My son is a passionate and gifted learner, amazing attributes often overshadowed by lack of access and necessary accommodations, and the bar is oftentimes too low in the world of special education. In third grade, seeing him bored and unengaged in school, I requested AP testing. Without the team support, he scored an 89% title in the country, easily placing in AP courses. In fourth grade, he was tested without accommodation, scoring poorly, and in danger of being removed from those courses. We found out and insisted he be tested with his IEP accommodations. Scores night and day, he stayed in AP courses, the harder choice as he requires one-to-one push-in support for access. Middle school transition, similarly flavored. We were told, "The model doesn't support sped push-in to classes. He won't be supported in AP classes, so he shouldn't be placed there despite his scores to the contrary." We placed him anyway. He wanted that. His IEP services couldn't be put aside because of the model. A few weeks later, a revised IEP showed 12-plus one-to-one sped push-in hours removed without our permission or knowledge. With a recording of the PPT, those were returned. He became the exception to the model, but what about the others? Fast forward 2021, eighth grade, full remote learning during COVID, five-day-per-week live streaming classes, difficult for most and especially for him, without accommodations and services. Typical A's dropped to Cs, D's, and Fs. No one even asked why. Longstanding accommodations and services left to the wayside despite ongoing pleas that his IEP be implemented. The variation of lowering the bar this time came from the head of our district's Fed. It's too much work, i.e., he can't do it. Time to consider his passion and drop other AP courses for high school. But what about his solid A in Advanced CLA, I asked? The most difficult of his AP courses, but where implementation of his IEP has been most consistent. The response? "We'll look at priorities." So I humbly ask you to help enforce priorities. A pandemic can't set aside the IDEA. We must protect our most vulnerable students, not first set them aside. We must ensure access to a free and appropriate public education. Lowering the bar can never be an equitable solution. Leveling the playing field, implementing universal accommodations for all learners to benefit, while meeting the needs of our special learners is. So please, help our districts do what is right, not what is easy, and to recognize that all of our sped students are an equal part of our nation's future and how it will be defined. Without them, we cannot be whole. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Caroline Laram. Caroline, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioner Cardona and Board members. My name is Caroline Laram, and I am a Greenwich parent of a special education child. I recently signed and filed a 10-4B complaint with the SDE that the commissioner dismissed. In the complaint, I, along with other parents, alleged that special education children in Greenwich Public Schools are not receiving their state and federally mandated services despite the fact that the services were outlined in their IEPs. The complaint alleged this was a district-wide policy. Hence, referring parents to their due process rights, as the commissioner's dismissal did, does not address the loss of educational opportunity occurring in Greenwich. With the complaint, we attached a formal letter from the Greenwich Teachers Union stating that teachers are being prevented from delivering mandated service hours to special education children. The letter states, quote, "It has been brought to the attention of the GEA that the district is again failing to follow the collective bargaining agreement, our policies, and the state and federal regulations governing special education. Special education teachers and other service providers at the elementary level that were assigned to live instruction have in this past week been given the added responsibility and service hours for remote students as well. It is unclear how the district thought these teachers could provide the mandated service hours within the contractually mandated workday," end quote. The Greenwich Board of Education received this letter on September 22, 2020, and has not yet taken any action. There has been no discussion at any Board of Education meeting, and there has been no mention to parents of what they are doing to remedy this. Furthermore, the GEA stated back in February 2020, quote, "Over 1,000 mandated service hours were not and are not provided because special education teachers are stretched too thin," end quote. Today, there are numerous children with disabilities in Greenwich Public Schools who are not having their needs met as per their IEP. This has been a very frustrating process as a parent of a child with a disability. And the frustrating part is that every member of the State Board of Education knows what a disadvantage children with disabilities have in the public school system, yet the commissioner has chosen not to help us. The Greenwich Public Schools, and now apparently the SDE, hide behind a shield of due process as you claim that parents have the right to file complaints or file for due process. However, please, can you take a minute of your time and call me, as I've left messages in your office, and explain to me how parents with very little means can afford an attorney or advocate to help with this process? Can you please explain to me what parents should do if they need legal counsel in order to have their children's basic civil rights met but can't afford $300 to $500 an hour to pay for an attorney? Honestly, what should they do? This is not a matter of independent complaints. The allegation in our complaint is of a system-wide policy of failing to provide IEP services. So suggesting that individual parents file due process actions is unrealistic because of the cost and time involved in these complaints, as well as the difficulty in getting the information to prove the deprivation of services. There is an army of parents across the state fighting the good fight for our kids with disabilities, and we wish so much that you would join us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Isaac Gottesman. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Gottesman, you're close. So, good morning, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to provide some comments to the State Board of Education at your meeting today. My name is Isaac Gottesman, and I am the current vice president of the Connecticut Chapter of the American Association of Colleges for Teacher Education, ACTECT. I'm also the chair of the Department of Education at the University of St. Joseph in West Hartford. The ACTECT is an association of 14 public and private colleges and universities that provide educator preparation programs to students interested in the education profession. We promote and strongly support high-quality teaching and education in the state schools and are advocates for robust educational leadership. On behalf of ACTECT, thank you to the Board of Educationer, Commissioner On behalf of ACTECT, thank you to the Board of Educationer, Commissioner Cardona, and the Department of Education, especially to those individuals who many of us from ACTECT work with on a regular basis. With the second wave of COVID-19 now here, we recognize the department and school districts continue to face a myriad of challenges, including trying to address educational inequities that have only been exacerbated by this health crisis. We are all grappling with how to best continue to educate our students, whether it is in person, online, or a combination of both. We applaud your leadership and efforts, and we want to continue to be a partner in your efforts to fill these educational gaps wherever it is appropriate. One concern we wanted to raise, however, is that as we move quickly to address teacher and staffing shortages in our schools, we need to be sure that individuals are qualified, possess the proper skills, and reflect the diversity of the students in the classroom. We realize that during this unprecedented crisis, there are no perfect solutions or simple answers, and we need to be flexible in tackling these challenges. We only want to raise a note of caution as we accelerate the process of moving future educators into our classrooms. We know you have the same goals and are doing everything you can to ensure quality teachers in our schools. As my ACTECT chapter colleagues have said previously, we look forward to continuing our work together with the Department of Education, the board, and the various educational stakeholders such as the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and other education organizations. Please continue to feel free to reach out to our association on issues of mutual interest. We stand ready to help, and thank you again for the opportunity to address the board.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Laura Ly O'Hagan.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having this open forum so parents can speak. My name is Laura Ly O'Hagan, and I'm a parent of a second grader in Greenwich, Connecticut, with an IEP for reading and writing. I'm new to this process. I'm new to the need to be an expert in special education standards, policies, legal framework, and all of the things that come along with being a parent of a special learner. But what I'm not new to is advocacy, political organizing, and the workings of the Greenwich municipal government, and public education after serving a term on the RTM. So I'm also coming to you this morning to express disappointment about the recent dismissal of the parent-driven complaint about special education services, the one that was just mentioned by Jennifer and Caroline. The reason I'm coming this morning is because this dismissal just simply showed so little recognition of the collective efforts by parents in Greenwich. The local Board of Education, which is keenly aware of the ongoing issues based on years of studies, multiple complaints, and currently another audit, which was required and requested, so they know the level of discontent, and this dismissal, being so public, shows that they might take this as a win. What we're mostly concerned about is that they may see this dismissal as approval for their lack of action. I wanted to also raise awareness about something extraordinary that's happened in the last 18 months in Greenwich. A few parents, some of those included Jennifer and Caroline, but many, many others in Greenwich, realized that their own individual struggles and common experiences were... Individual struggles, there were so many common experiences, and there was a collective view that there's frustration and fatigue and worry and stress. So they formed a parent group that was to support and encourage each other, and in that they unearthed just so many stories of fear and intimidation and loss. This loss is educational opportunities that cannot be made up. So we come to you to say that because of the level of inaction and the history of inaction that is so well documented in Greenwich, we need the additional support of the State Board of Education. We have the validation from the GEA, the Teachers Union, validating the concerns and the ongoing issues that were raised in more specificity. But what we're asking for is acknowledgement of the ongoing issues. In any other case, the Greenwich Board of Ed is not going to act on its own. There is no evidence over the many, many years of these issues that there is an urgency to resolve these issues. So parents of special learners, they need the support of the State Board of Education to bring urgency to these issues. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Kuta, but I do not see Alan signed into the webinar. I will pass Alan for now and move to the next speaker, Nicole Rizzo. Nicole, please go ahead.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good morning, and thank you for having me today. I am a Connecticut educator and founder of Connecticut Public School Advocates. Connecticut Public School Advocates is a newly-formed organization representing a large network of educators across Connecticut, advocating for equitable and safe education. We believe strongly in the value of high-quality education as a right for all students, regardless of race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, or gender. We have forged a collaboration with Connecticut Bats to address the ongoing crisis that currently faces the education profession. Education is a cornerstone of our society, and we understand that opening schools during a pandemic impacts entire communities. In the past weeks since schools have reopened, Connecticut has experienced the single-largest COVID-19 infection spike since the start of the pandemic. And furthermore, the largest COVID-19 study to date finds that children are key to transmitting the virus. Similarly, the CDC says schools are not the safest place during the pandemic, and in-person learning is a high-risk activity. Currently, Connecticut has the fourth-highest death rate in the United States for COVID-19. Governor Lamont's narrative that COVID transmission is a rare event in schools is completely false. Every Connecticut county has reached a high-risk category for both leading and secondary indicators. Our community is at grave risk for both loss of life and a highly skilled and talented teacher workforce. Our state administration has relied on the guidance of the Harvard Global Health Institute in order to determine its leading indicator threshold. However, the state's guidance deviates from Harvard's scientific recommendations for that category, which clearly states that, in the absence of conditions for pandemic-resilient teaching and learning spaces, schools continue with remote learning. Pandemic-resilient learning spaces are defined as those with enhanced air ventilation and upgraded filtration, sanitation resources, hygiene practices, pandemic-resilient bathrooms, as well as physical and group distancing. The vast majority of our public school spaces are not equipped with these requirements, especially those in already marginalized communities. We join the state bargaining education coalition's urgent call to follow statewide steps to secure our schools or to move to remote learning until January 18. We also publicly request economic relief and guaranteed job protection relief for parents, guardians, and families. We are living in an unprecedented moment, one that presents a great challenge for humanity, and we gather today to fulfill the board's four promises. These are promises not kept until our public schools are fully funded with equitable safeguards in place for all students statewide. We must take steps now to strengthen safety or else move to all-distance learning as we brace for the second wave of the virus. Thank you.
Very much.
The next speaker is Alan Kuta. Go ahead, Alan.
Hi, my name is Alan Kuta. I'm speaking for Diana Martinez, who is a Greenwich parent of a child with autism and a child with ADHD in Greenwich public schools. She...I'm speaking as if I am she. I also worked in Greenwich public schools as a language arts teacher in the middle schools and the high school. I struggled to get appropriate services for my children, realizing slowly that if I did not know the law and could not cite the specifics of the law, I was not going to get the services my children were entitled to. For example, at the end of kindergarten, when my autistic son was due for his triennial review, I was told the school was not going to test him because they already knew he qualified for services. Technically, a student can...a school can agree with a parent that testing is unnecessary, but it was presented as a choice that had already been made for me. It became clear that the school had low expectations for my child, and that unless I challenged their decision and insisted upon testing, it was not going to happen. I had to get an advocate to help me learn the specifics of what my son was entitled to. Meanwhile, as an educator in the district, I sat in PPT meetings where parents were told that their children did not qualify for testing because their children were on...their child was on grade level despite the fact that the issue being presented was related to social and emotional well-being. I knew what a parent needed to speak up and insist on testing, that the law was being cited with incomplete, leaving out key details about their children's legal rights. But parents did not always take that step as hiring an advocate because it cost them over $100 an hour to hire an advocate, and most parents simply don't have that kind of money. What was worse was that parents were so often relieved as if their child was flagged as being, quote-unquote, "too successful to qualify for testing for services." I watched them as their children continued to struggle with attentional and self-regulation issues that crippled their interactions with peers and teachers, in which ultimately led to low grades and low self-esteem. At one school, a child with autism sat alone in the cafeteria with no social skills support. She did not get speech services, although she was in desperate need of them because I was told, quote-unquote, "it did not fit within the schedule." Translation: insufficient number of speech teachers. Instead, she spent her time with a reading support specialist on decoding, but decoding isn't the same as speech, as we all know. She would not make progress on communicating with peers for the simple reason that the school had not acquired the proper staffing nor expertise to support her. I fully understand that many people have stereotypes about Greenwich, Connecticut. It may not be a top priority to address the issues I bring before you, since you assume that we all can afford the legal expense needed to navigate your children's education. I'm here humbly to ask you to rethink... To rethink the bias, as 36% of our students are minorities, 15% receive free and reduced cost costs. Also, not all of our families have the financial wherewithal to advocate for their services for their children to meet their needs. To dismiss our complaint is to widen the chasm between the privileged and the families struggling to meet basic needs. Their children deserve their services when they are entitled to them, and they trust our educational system. They are unlikely to challenge administrators who misquote the law to them. By default, schools should be held accountable when they mislead and fail our families of disability.
I must ask you to conclude.
Jean is being off. Is he being... What's happening here? Thank you. Our next speaker is Fran Rabinowitz.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, State Board of Education, and I'm very pleased to be here today to speak in favor of the Black and Latino Studies curriculum, actually to speak very, very favorably and excitedly. The inclusion of the Black and Latino Studies elective in the secondary-level courses studies in Connecticut provides an opportunity to nurture and develop a deep understanding and appreciation for our diverse citizenry and their role in our democracy. Once Public Act 19-12 was enacted into law, the State Education Resource Center very efficiently and wonderfully organized an advisory group from across Connecticut representing agencies, institutions, and interested individuals. They provided critical expertise through their work on several committees and ultimately developed a comprehensive model curriculum, one which I feel, after many, many years in developing curricula in all areas, is one that truly is a model for the state. I'm thrilled that it's going to be around the diverse diversity in our state, that it's going to push forward the contributions of our diverse citizenry. But I also want you to know that just the model and the essential questions and understandings and the way that the curriculum is presented is state-of-the-art. The curriculum has been reviewed by the advisory group, a panel of experts, and a State Board of Education committee. It provides significant resources, including units of study, that will undoubtedly support the instructional delivery of this course. I'm confident, on behalf of Connecticut's Public School Superintendents, that this model curriculum will be a valuable tool for Connecticut educators, given your support. I appreciate your consideration, and I am very excited and appreciative of the work of CIRC and of the legislature in moving this forward. I can only say to you that I hope that this is the area that we needed to get started on, and I am very hopeful that as we move forward, the state will consider other curricula, other model curricula for statewide distribution. Honestly, it's time for each district to stop having to create and spend the dollars to do their own curriculum in every single area. It is high time for us as a state to come together and have model curricula that people can use statewide. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Amy Huffnagle. Amy, go ahead.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good morning, Commissioner and board. I'm here this morning to speak also about the PA 1912 Black and Latino Curriculum Proposal. As a member of the CIRC Advisory Group Committee and as a staff person at the Harriet Beecher-Stowe Center as a cultural worker, it has been truly illuminating to see the ways in which the state of Connecticut has been working to try to unpack and address systemic racism across the board, using history as the sort of foundational place to think about doing that. Cultural organizations and museums, of course, often work hand-in-hand with public schools, and the Harriet Beecher-Stowe Center is no exception to that. And at the core of our work as a cultural institution is this idea that if you can understand history and the way in which systemic racism has been at the core of our nation's unfortunate coming of age, you can start to understand the conditions of our contemporary life. Harriet Beecher-Stowe's work and life, and as a writer, writing Uncle Tom's Cabin, was all about trying to be...to inspire people to bring about social change and to take action to do that. And she used people's lives and stories as emblematic moments in which to inspire this kind of action in her readers. Nothing is more true than the way in which the curriculum has been written within this project. It's to serve as this kind of inspiration for students to understand a range of different role models, moments and histories, and in fact themselves, to inspire civic engagement. I would contend, actually, that one of the best things I read this summer was Zadie Smith, who said, "What do we want history to do to us?" And while there are so many ways to answer that question, I think what ultimately this curriculum does is to expand civil discourse around complicated and intense racial conversations. And if the board wants to ask itself, what can we do to address this major cultural problem in our nation at this moment? Engaging in this kind of work in the secondary schools is a critical... Engaging in this kind of work in the secondary schools is a critical and important step in that process. This year, we awarded an award to Albert Woodfox, who wrote a book called Solitary. And in an interview, he said to me that it was really unfortunate that he had had to learn about Black and diverse cultural history from his prison cell because he never learned it in the public school system. Let's not let that continue anymore. Let's do the right work. So, thank you. I'm so impressed by Connecticut leading this effort in the nation around building this history and in turn, building a more equitable and just civilization.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Gwen Samuel.
Good morning. This is Gwen Samuel from Connecticut Parents Union. I pray you all had a safe and family and friend virtual Thanksgiving. And I'm speaking two-fold. One is regarding the I'm excited to be a part of the Black and Latino curriculum development. Shout out to Dr. Foster and many of the other educators and other participants, our young people. I mean, it was just a great coming together of Connecticut. But I would be remiss to not acknowledge my concerns. So while Dr. Ben Foster did say that we're not going to be focused on the victimization of Black history, which is American history, I I am concerned that if we present it in such a kumbaya way, that many will feel absolved from having to do self-reflections, having to look at our many of our educational practices that still result in disproportionate suspension and expulsions, that still result in certain populations, Black and Brown, very specifically in poor communities not having access to many of the resources that they need to be successful, especially during the pandemic. So I want to just caution us that while this is a great endeavor, this is not a magic bullet regarding disproportionate practices in our schools. So again, I want to highlight the success of the curriculum and its development, but it's 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 not a kumbaya moment. I understand this is about courageous conversations, but we need a little more than courageous conversations. We need courageous actions to ensure that every Connecticut child, regardless of skin color, income level, has what they need academically, especially during the pandemic. And with that being said, I do want to give a shout out to the Greenwich parents. And I and I will say that I didn't come on a call. I didn't know they were speaking. But I'm on Facebook now doing Facebook Live because I got to wonder what's happening in Hartford, Bridgeport, New Haven. Because if this is happening in Greenwich, these allegations of this extreme are on special education services, and we're hearing across the country, ladies and gentlemen, that the needs of our special ed population during the pandemic is not being met. So it's not just Connecticut. So I'm concerned if you are being dismissive to the Greenwich parents. And I'm not saying Greenwich like, you know, they're better parents than other communities. What I'm saying is they organized, they got on the call, their messaging is clear, and is resonating with other parents who may not be on this call, especially if they are of color. So you are having December eighth, a virtual town hall with parents and families. I would encourage you to take what the Greenwich parents said and include the conversations about special education in a very intentional way. Because if educators and other people are moving toward remote learning because of the second wave and the governments governors talking about pushing them back into phase one or whatever that was where we were quarantined back into our homes, that means we will be almost at a hundred percent remote learning. And so that means within that population, our special needs children. And I don't know how you're going to do it, considering the fact that in August eleventh, I think it was in August, where you voted to reduce the the number of hours and nine hundred dollars. So I say that there are, I understand I'm getting close to time. So I'm saying, so the conflicts of your August decision are being played out in Greenwich. Or I'm using Greenwich as an example, because you reduce the hours. And now parents are saying, and teachers are saying, they don't have the support systems in place to provide these special ed children. So please incorporate that in your December eighth meeting. And remember, this curriculum is is put in place so that we can become a better state, a better community, a better society. But that doesn't mean that ending that racism will just automatically end in our public school systems because you have a curriculum. You have to hold individuals accountable to the roles they play. Thank you so much for allowing me to share.
Thank you.
That concludes the conference portion.
Thank you very much.
Alan, I have a, I just have a comment to make. I know generally when we get these kind of things coming before us in, you know, from Greenwich, we had about six of them that we usually asked the commissioner to look into them. I'm not sure if Brian is on the call, but I would like to make sure that there is some kind of follow up with Greenwich, especially for that one call, the one speaker that asked who she should contact. So I don't know if Brian is on the call, but if we could get that to the staff, I think that would be appropriate.
Erin, Ms. Bennet, this is Aldis. I don't know she, I just want you to know that Legal Director Jessa Myrtle had sent me an email. She will be following up with the board members regarding this.
Yeah, Aldis, I would like also Charlene to be able to say something about this issue. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Beau. Thank you, Erin, and thank you, Estella, for teeing that up for us. And you're correct, you know, when if we were in a space, a physical space, you know, this is where we would probably have the group of parents who speak be able to go and have further conversation. We are aware of the issues and our Brian is on a on a call. And so for our parents who also passionately share their concerns that the dismissal of the the complaint was not at all an indication of our lack of interest and commitment to working with the families regarding the issues that are there. And you're correct that Brian, our director of special education, I know that he's had conversation with maybe a few of the parents. And we're continuing to, we're continuing to engage to address the issues which are so critically important. So I just really wanted to say that. And certainly we have can have more conversations and update you as we go forward.
Thank you. Please do. Anything else?
Thank you. May have a move next item on our agenda. Executive session personnel matter may have motion to go executive session.
So move Estella.
Second.
Thank you, Beau.
Bye. Bye.
Okay, board members, also a reminder, please to completely log out of this meeting and then log into your other meeting for the executive session.
Okay.
Bye bye.
Next item on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes of November 4.
Chair Taylor, please ask for a motion to exit out of executive session.
I have a motion to exit the executive section or resume the public session.
So moved.
Second.
What was second?
Favor.
Again.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor, raise your hands. I see.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion on the minutes of number four.
Excuse me, Chair Taylor. I'm sorry that I'm interrupting you. I believe we were going to
Right.
Ask permission for the board to take the agenda out of order so that we can ask if we can consider Agenda Item 6C.
Okay, thank you, Al. There are any objections going out of order on the agenda?
No.
Saying none? Okay, I'm open on Item 6C.
So moved. Erin?
I'm sorry, I believe this requires a roll call.
Yes, it will require.
And the roll call is verifying that you read the report and then for your vote.
I'll second it. This is Karen, I'll second it. This is Karen, I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Al, would you call the roll, please? The verification.
Okay, thank you. Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Lopez?
Yes.
Karen Benham?
Yes.
Heidi Burr?
Yes.
Karen DeBoz-Walton?
Yeah.
Elwood Exley?
Yes.
Arnold Harris?
Yes.
Martha Prue?
Yes.
Awold Arasco?
Yes.
Lea Seazy?
Yes.
Thank you. The bill, it has, the report is passed with 10 in favor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of November 4 meeting.
I am sorry, I am sorry. We have not voted for the report. We just voted a motion to consider it. We have to vote regarding the report itself. There are two separate things that we have to do, my understanding.
We would request that you, let's perform the roll call though, and please confirm as you vote that you have certified that you've read the written report of the commissioner
Right.
consistent with the drafted resolution.
Yeah, yes, and so we need to make a motion saying we are accepting the recommendation. And then, you know, vote in roll call.
And, and when you vote, affirm it will say that it's the accompanying report.
Right.
Attorney Holtman, unless you disagree, I think that's probably the best way to ensure we have a clean record of this.
I have no disagreement.
I have no disagreement. That sounds right. Thanks.
So Alda, if you would mind reading the roll call again, please, so that the members may affirmatively state their reading of the written report and their vote.
Okay, thank you. Chair Taylor?
I have read the report, I vote yes.
Vice Chair Lopez?
I've read the report and I vote yes.
Erin Benham?
I have read the report and I vote yes.
Bonnie Burr?
I have read the report and I vote yes.
Karen DeBeau's Walton?
Confirming that I read the report, voting yes.
Elwood Exley?
I have read the report and I vote yes.
Donald Harris?
I have read the report and I vote yes.
Martha Prue?
I have read the report and I vote yes.
Awoldo Riesko?
Yes, after reading the report.
Malia Seavy?
I've read the report and vote yes.
Thank you, that's ten that has confirmed that they have read the report and voted yes, in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Holdman, and thank you, Nancy Puglisi.
Okay. And I think we are back to voting on the minutes of the November four meeting, is that correct, Al?
Oh, yes, we are now up to the minutes.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, Aaron. Second, Bonnie.
Who's second?
Bonnie, I think.
Bonnie.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Commissioner?
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to present my Commission's report, but before I do that, I just want to say hello and I hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Albeit different, I hope you had time to relax, recharge a little bit, and enjoy time with your loved ones. Let me get into it here. I also want to just acknowledge and apologize that I came a little bit late to the meeting. I was in Manchester with a press conference on the digital divide and addressing the digital divide in Connecticut, and we've been able to work collaboratively with other offices, including the Office of the Governor, to ensure that devices are available to students that need them. And we're pleased with that. I just want to acknowledge the hard work of our Performance Office led by Ajit and Deputy Commissioner Dzina Smith. And, and making sure that happens. I was pleased to be there to celebrate what has been a lot of work, not only by our agency, but by other agencies and the districts, to get technology and connectivity in the hands of kids. So, next slide, please. We were very busy in November. Just a couple of things that I'll bring to your attention. We had the Teacher of the Year Fall Social, and I was able to join. It was a, it was a nice event where we got to acknowledge the Teacher of the Year and previous Teachers of the Year. There was a Educators Rising Press Conference with Governor Lamont at Bristol Eastern High School to announce an innovative program. You'll hear more about it in the in the remarks. I was fortunate to be able to serve as a panelist on a national assessment and accountability session for the Council of Chief State School Officers. As you can see, there's so many different other things that have kept our team busy. But those are just some of the highlights. Next. Some of the recent events that I want to just highlight, again, I can go on for a long time on this. I just want to give you a high level overview of some of the work that our agency's been doing. There was a NetStat session done by the Turnaround Office on November thirteenth. We had our own, Dr. Estella Lopez, opening up the event. Thank you, Vice Chair Lopez. The Office of Strategic Planning and Partnership, partnerships kicked off the twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty two regional school choice application process yesterday, it was. So we're pleased to see that that's up and running and moving forward, and our Talent Office has been very busy over the last couple of months. Making sure that we're doing everything we can to be flexible to get people to help support keeping our schools open. The Next Gen program, I'll talk a little bit more later. Next slide, please. Health and Nutrition hasn't been left behind either. They've been working really hard. Working to the, to support the USDA Emergency Meals to You Project in Connecticut to address the hunger support that many of our students need. In terms of special education support, our Bureau of Special Education has been very busy attending six regional feedback sessions with Khan Case. Just trying to support special education directors and those on the, in the districts with special education services. Next slide, please. Want to acknowledge some folks from our team that have been asked to present nationally. It's important to know, you know, we're so busy working, but, you know, the efforts in Connecticut have been recognized by others, and we've been asked several different occasions to be presenters or panelists on national conversations. So the National Academy of Education asked Ajit Gopalakrishnan to present an assessment in the era of COVID. You see John Preston Alley, Shannon Yearwood, they do amazing work, and they've been asked to present. So has Judy Carson, who, and Shelby Pons, who've done great work with family engagement. And Dr. Burnell also doing great work with Office of Early Childhood on practices specific to early childhood education in Connecticut. So these are just some of them. I mentioned the other one already. You know, these are just some of the opportunities that our members have, members of our team have to share the good work that's happening and learn from others, but also part of what we've learned. Switching gears a little bit, I want to acknowledge Reese Naughton. Congratulations, Reese, on being Connecticut's Kid Governor. That's a huge accomplishment. She was elected by fifth graders across the state to serve as twenty twenty one Connecticut's Kid Governor, and there was no recount needed, none of that. She got it. You know. She, I, I had an opportunity to hear her speak, and I look forward to meeting her soon. But, you know, her focus is going to be on improving positivity and mental health in our communities. And promoting safety during a pandemic, like, spot on. And the clip that I did see of her, she has a lot of energy, and without question, whenever she walks into the room and starts speaking, people smile. So I'm so excited about Reese Naughton serving as our Kid Governor for the twenty twenty one school year, year, and I know she'll be great. So congratulations, Reese. Next, I want to take a moment to acknowledge a friend of mine, somebody that is a champion for children in Connecticut. Paul Freeman is the Superintendent of the Year. Dr. Freeman, I, I got to know Dr. Freeman a little bit when we both served on the Legislative Achievement Gap Task Force about ten years ago, and let me tell you, he's someone that I respect tremendously for his, the level of character, passion, and dedication he has to serve the children of Connecticut. He was recognized for outstanding leadership and as a champion of equity in learning for more than twenty five years by CAPS. He co-chair of the Governor's COVID nineteen Learn From Home Task Force. You might remember that he helped when we were looking at distribution of laptops. He was, he raised his hand and said, how can I help? Paul's a member of the National Advisory Board at the University of Michigan's National Center for School Safety. He's an adjunct instructor at UConn's MEAC School of Education. And he began his career in Amity as an ELA teacher to middle school and then at the high school. You know, one of the things most recently you might have read is that he worked hard to discontinue the high school Indians' Native Mass, Native American mascot. So, you know, Paul definitely is a strong leader in Connecticut. We're proud of the work that he's done. We're proud that he's Connecticut's CAPS Superintendent of the Year. Congratulations, Paul. As I said before, the Talent Office has been very busy. You know, it's really important that we share with you how we're doing our part to support providing safe in-person learning to students of Connecticut. You know, we have over seventy percent of our students that have had the opportunity to go into the classroom and learn in, in person this year. You know, the thirty percent roughly that didn't, large majority of them are families who've chosen to keep their children home. So that effort requires a lot of work, and part of that work is making sure that we provide flexibilities where possible to allow districts to hire from a larger pool of candidates, and we've done that. Step Up TT utilizes community members and college students to meet district hiring needs. So these flexible staffing strategies allows us to identify, hire, and authorize permit individuals from a larger pool of candidates, including community members and college students. In just the four months, first four months of twenty twenty one, we've processed more than eight hundred sixty permits and emergency authorizations. We're on pace to quickly surpass our numbers for the past two years. The numbers increase weekly, and I think the, the thing to know here is what we're trying to do is be innovative and creative around allowing teachers who have to be quarantined, for example, to be able to teach from home through a virtual software like this, and allowing substitutes to be in the classroom assisting. And by doing that, and by being flexible, and by processing these applications, there's a greater likelihood that the schools don't have to close because they don't have enough staffing. So just a shout out to our amazing talent team for the work that they're doing to keep schools open. Next slide, please. We also know that experience is our best teacher. So we took that, we took what we've learned in the spring, and we developed two documents that we think are, can help support districts as they do the work of making sure they're providing safe learning environments while providing the best opportunities for our learners in Connecticut. So the Remote Learning Checklist, I don't expect you to see the words on there. You know, we, we've transitioned our delivery methods in a way that we never experienced in the past. And through our partnership with different stakeholders, we've expanded technology and connectivity. As those efforts continue, we recognize there were certain things that we learned from the spring that we want to make sure we, we put, put out there so that when districts have to make decisions around remote learning, we're asking, you know, are the social emotional needs of the students being met through remote learning? How are you going to secure foods? Food distributions to make sure that hunger insecurity doesn't grow as we shift to remote, in those cases where we need to. So it's basically a guide for districts to consider as they're thinking about that. The document on the right, Learning and Growing Together, to reimagine the possibilities. If you recall, the Learn Together, Grow Together Initiative, where we were pre-COVID, discussing ways to really blur the lines between districts so they can learn from one another. Well, this is the same model, really, to, to share best practices around issues that have come up in Connecticut. Whether it's communication or food distribution. You know, we wanted to highlight some districts that have done it really well and give those best practices out to other districts. So thank you to the districts that have shared with us some of those practices. Again, board, this is our attempt to show you what we're doing to try to keep best practices at the forefront in Connecticut. We'll continue to do that. Next slide, please. I'm, I'm very pleased to be able to introduce you to Rochelle Brown. She's Connecticut's twenty twenty one Teacher of the Year from Paquonic School in Windsor. And at this point, you know, I'll do a very quick intro, and I believe there's a video, and I'm hoping the video will work, but throughout her career as an educator, she's made a difference in achieving equity and excellence. An example is that she joined an after-school program for boys of color to address the achievement gap, which is, which included traveling to these students to other states to engage in cultural and educational experiences. She served as her school's co-chair of the District Equity Committee, excuse me, the District's Equity Committee. And a fun fact about her is that during her virtual Teacher of the Year interview, one of her colleagues described her as described her as most likely having the most diverse collection of children's books in the state of Connecticut, which she shares with her colleagues openly at Paquonic School. So all the students have the opportunity to read books that reflect their cultures and diversity. You're going to see a theme today in our meeting. You know, with the curriculum piece, but I'm really proud. I got to meet Rochelle. What an outstanding individual, amazing teacher, and I know she's going to represent the wonderful profession well this upcoming year. Let's see the video.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rochelle Brown, Connecticut's twenty twenty one Teacher of the Year. I'm currently sitting here in one of my favorite places, my kindergarten classroom here at Paquonic School in Windsor. I work in such a diverse school district, and my students are truly reflective of that wonderful diversity. When I was growing up in Hartford many years ago, one of the things that I noticed was that the books that were read to me and the books that I read to myself were not reflective of who I was or my experiences. Becoming a teacher twenty one years ago, I decided that students in my classroom would never feel that way. And for that reason, I've been collecting diverse books for over twenty one years. Every student in my classroom will be able to visualize themselves in a book that I've read to them, whether I'm focusing on a growth mindset and the power of yet. Or the fact that we all need to be a little bit kinder to one another. We can also answer questions like, who invented the Crayola crayon? One of the most beautiful things about books, and the reason why I value books so much, is that they have the power to express so many different things to so many different people. Books have the power to transform. While our experiences may be different, we can also see that there are common threads that unite us all. Children need to know that they are enough just as they are. They also need to know that the world needs someone just like them. There's nothing more rewarding than a child looking at a character in a book and saying, hey, that character looks like me, or wow, I love to wear my hair like that. Better yet, there's nothing better than a student listening to you read a book and discovering a path for themselves, like saying, hey, I'd like to be an architect when I grow up. This year in particular, books have also helped me to have some tough conversations. In this book, "And the People Stayed Home", we learn about the pandemic and how the earth and people need to heal. In my role as Connecticut's twenty twenty one Teacher of the Year, I hope to be able to spread my message of diversity, inclusion, and equity. One.
Bravo.
Amazing, it's amazing. So, you know, that's Rochelle Brown, obviously. Having met her, you know, that video is amazing, but you could just see the, the smiles of her kids, her students' faces when I visited her classroom, and you know, she's a remarkable educator, and we acknowledge her. You know, the Teacher of the Year program really isn't the one that says, who's the best teacher in Connecticut? It was never designed for that. It's really designed to honor the profession and pick someone that can represent the profession best in Connecticut, and Rochelle's going to do an amazing job. I look forward to working with her, and hopefully we get to see her in person soon. Congratulations, Rochelle. Moving to the next slide, I want to acknowledge also our Para-educator of the Year, Maria Saum. You know, she was one of the oldest of a family of thirteen siblings. She had the responsibility of helping her siblings with their schoolwork. Maria thinks of what the parents of her students would want for them, and she goes above and beyond to meet the needs of the students so that they could be successful in their classes. She recognizes the strengths of her students and starts with that mentality in order to help them continue to grow. She never gives up on kids. Congratulations, Maria. Next slide, please. So when talking about the Next Gen Educators, it's an innovative program between State Department of Education and CCSU. It really, I just give you a little bit of background on it. You know, there was an interest not only by the governor, but by, by all of us, to really accelerate how we increase the pipeline to teaching for young folks in Connecticut, and, you know, in a recent conversation with the President of Central Connecticut State University, who said, listen, we need to do something. The Dean, Hissalis, and Shwana Tucker joined the conversation, and they really ran with this program and created the Next Gen Educators. Next slide. So the Next Gen Educators, next slide, please, is designed to bring highly motivated college students Is designed to bring highly motivated college students seeking education degrees into the classrooms today. Not only does its initiative address today's most pressing needs, it can serve as a pipeline for well-qualified educators now and into the future. The students who are in the program are sophomores and juniors. They get experiential learning and get paid a daily rate. That's critical. If you're a college student, you remember the college days, you know, maybe you could step up from ramen when you get a regular paycheck. And they can work virtually through CCSU providing them with a laptop. CCSU has been instrumental in supporting their educator. This experiential learning opportunity for college students pursuing an education degree. The flexible approach to help districts meet the needs with immediate access to new talent allows for, you know, pre-service teachers to really acclimate themselves and be successful. At the end of the day, it's a model of collaboration that's a win-win for all. We're hoping to continue to expand it throughout Connecticut with the other universities. We have other districts that have interest in getting these juniors and sophomores and juniors into their classrooms earlier to not only learn by doing, but also to, you know, for those savvy districts that know how to do this right, they could be really interviewing these folks as they're doing their field experience and helping them land the job right away. It's a win-win for everyone. Last slide, please. So I want to close with a video, but what I want to do is just acknowledge that our teachers, staff, administrators, boards of education are working extremely hard to plan, adapt, and deliver instruction in ways that is equitable, meaningful, and above all, safe. While we'd be hard pressed to find anyone who believes that the school year has been anything but, had been routine, normal, or stress-free, the headlines and public dialogue sometimes would suggest that there's not a lot of positive things happening. You know, when I visit schools and I hear from educators, I see so many great things happening. And what we wanted to do is put together a video just with a little excerpt of why we're doing what we're doing. And, you know, they say a picture's worth a thousand words, so a short video is worth a million. It's really important that we recognize the hard work that's happening in our districts to provide in-person learning opportunities. Everyone is being flexible, working hard. And this video really captures that. So I'm going to close my comments today with a brief video on the success that we saw in one community.
We know that great planning and having the mitigation strategies in place to minimize COVID-19 transmission in our schools have been incredibly effective. To date, our collective efforts to prioritize the health and safety of our school communities have allowed the majority of Connecticut's over half a million students to return to the classroom this fall. Now is not the time to let our guard down in school or in the community. But remember, you're not doing this for me.
You're doing this so I can continue to instill the joy of reading in my students so they grow and develop into lifelong learners.
You're doing this so I can play with my friends at school.
You're doing this for educators and staff whose dedication to keeping our schools open in this ever-changing landscape is inspirational.
Public health officials indicate that school cases reported are typically traced back to events outside our schools. If we continue to do our part and follow the rules in place, there is much less probability that spread will take place in the school or workplace.
You're doing this because we know remote learning will never replace the classroom experience. We must stay vigilant on what we know is working.
We owe it to our students to continue those strategies that allowed Connecticut to open the doors to our classrooms and keep transmission spread out of our school buildings. The use of face coverings in the school at all times and maintaining physical distance from one another where possible have helped reduce transmission. Regular washing of hands and the use of sanitizer have also helped. On the playing field and with friends and extended family and in the community, the use of these same mitigation strategies can also ensure our schools remain open.
You're doing this so we can all stay healthy and safe.
We are all doing this together because after a six-month absence, continuing in-person teaching and learning ensures that our students have the best educational success.
We have never had a time in which our actions impact others more than this point in time. Together, let's rise to the challenge, stay committed, and play our part for our students and educators. They deserve it. And remember.
What I hope you were able to see in that video is the happiness of the kids, first of all, the fact that those mitigation strategies were being used well. And, you know, we can't measure the social emotional growth that these students experience when they're in school, but hopefully in the video you could see how they're happy and they're successful. And it's critically important that we do everything in our power to provide those safe learning environments so they can continue to learn in person where possible. That concludes my commissioner's report. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Have a motion for item six.
Second, Aaron.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, everyone. For the record, Laura Stephan. I'm the Chief of Staff and also the Legislative Liaison for the State Department of Education. Today I have nine proposals for your consideration, which were passed along to you from the Legislation and Policy Development Subcommittee a little under two weeks ago. So as we typically do, I think I would like to go through each one of these proposals one by one, stopping in between for questions, and then at the end, any conversation, and then take one vote on the one resolution that is before you. So I will proceed in that way. The first bill is from our Bureau of Special Education, and it's an act concerning the age when a special education student shall begin receiving transition services. So some of you may remember that there was a piece of legislation that passed a few sessions ago that required transition services to begin at age fourteen rather than at age sixteen for only students, special ed students that were diagnosed as being autistic. When that happened, many special ed directors began just considering transition services for all students at age fourteen instead of just for those in that one group. So we believe that the proposal before you is going to bring in line state statute with common practice. We do think that all students with an IEP can benefit from transition services beginning at an earlier age. And if this does get adopted by the board and passed through the General Assembly, we will be among twenty-nine other states that offer transition services at a younger age than sixteen. So I will stop there for any questions.
Don't see any questions. Might as well keep going.
Okay, great. The next set of, well, it's one proposal, but it has three different parts to it. All of them are pertaining to the bilingual educator certificate, but they all have three different things. And I know, I think Shawana, Dr. Tucker, is also on the line. So if her line isn't opened up, if it could be opened up, just in case there are questions that she may need to answer, that would be great. The first part of the proposal changes the way written competency is measured for both English and the other language. So currently, English competency is measured by successful passage of an essential skills test approved by the state board. So what this proposal is going to do is allow a substitution for if you have earned a degree at a college or university where the primary language was English, then you would be able to substitute that oral and written competency for the degree that you received at that English-speaking university. And vice versa, if you were a native English speaker and you received a degree from a predominantly, say, Spanish-speaking university, you would be able to waive having to take those competency tests. So that's what the first part of the proposal does. I don't know if there are any questions.
Don't seem to be.
Okay, I'll roll right along. So the next, the second part of this proposal clarifies or really changes a little bit the grade spans that the elementary bilingual education certificate is valid for. Right now, it is just a straight K-eight endorsement. So what this is doing is it's breaking it out and it's saying the first would be a K-nine at the elementary level, and then the second would be a four-nine at the middle level. And the justification for this, so over ninety-two percent of students in mandated bilingual education programs are in K-nine, not in K-eight. And so English learners, we know, may come to our classrooms from areas of strife or of poverty, resulting in limited or interrupted access to academic instruction. And some of those students are placed in age-appropriate grades, but they may need elementary-level instruction to catch up to their peers. So authorizing elementary bilingual teachers to serve students in grades K-nine and middle in grades four and nine improves district flexibility to create, I'm sorry, multi-age groups that better serve the academic needs of these students. Are there any questions with that one? Nope.
Laura, I'm not sure whether, I made a, just, your paper here says, "The proposal addresses the severe shortage of bilingual teachers in part by reducing the number of credits required to teach in secondary programs." Is that?
That is the next, is that this proposal or is that the next proposal?
Oh, am I on the wrong? Okay. I have it as, I thought that's where we were. Okay. Is this, oh, let's see.
The next, that's the next part of the proposal.
Yeah, the next, okay. So that's what you want now?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Okay, so lastly, the last part of the proposal creates two new secondary bilingual endorsements in both STEM and humanities. Currently, eligibility for secondary bilingual certification requires coursework for specific content areas as well as coursework and testing, I think this is what you were getting at, for bilingual, which is expensive and time-consuming. So in an effort to address the severe shortage areas for bilingual, this will result in the number of credits reduced, I'm sorry, this will reduce the number of credits that are required. So I think the easiest way to explain this one, because it is a little complicated, is to flip to the language itself, which is a few pages down. And it's under ten dash one forty-five H. All of the new language is in bold red, and what we're going to address now is subsection E. And so, like I said, this is creating two new areas within both STEMS and humanities. I'm just going to use STEM for the purposes of the explanation. And it's for, one is for certified bilingual teachers and the other is for certified teachers who are not certified bilingual teachers. So the first will allow certified bilingual educators completing fifteen hours of credit in combined content coursework in humanities to teach humanities in a bilingual program. That's one. And it'll be the same for STEM. The second will allow certified educators completing fifteen semester hours of credit in combined content coursework in humanities and the required coursework and testing for the bilingual endorsement to teach secondary humanities in the bilingual program. And that would be, again, the same in STEM. And I think this is, this is the part that is addressing the severe shortage area for bilingual teachers by removing some of the financial burdens and the time burdens.
Does, and I guess my question is, have we concluded that those requirements in that testing didn't add anything to the ability of the candidates to adequately teach? Or just that we can't do it now? And if it was the former, then should we be looking at that more generally than for bilingual teachers?
Yeah, I mean, I am definitely, is Shawana on the line? Because I think she would be better suited possibly to answer this question.
I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, great. We do have people already in our pipeline who would be more than qualified to teach in these areas. However, it is the cost barrier and is also the barrier of the certification that stops them from doing so. So by affording them this flexibility, it will expand the bandwidth of those that we already have in the pipeline and those coming into the pipeline as well.
So if they're, is my question, I understand the particular need with regard to bilingual because that bilingual skill is, you know, another skill on top of it. But if they are fully qualified without going through those courses, why would we require them of anyone else? Hello?
I'm back. We have some data that we can share. Chris? Ajit, can you let Chris in, please?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, I apologize. I was trying to unmute myself and I wasn't able to. So Chairman Taylor, that's a really good question. And I think that the challenge that we're trying to resolve at this point is in order to be a bilingual educator at the secondary level, you not only have to complete all the bilingual requirements, as Laura spoke to, but you also essentially have to have majored in your content area. So if you wanted to be a bilingual certified history teacher, you'd have to have thirty credits of history. And so the challenge that that creates is it essentially forces somebody that would otherwise be eligible to be a bilingual educator to have to go back and complete thirty credits of content area expertise just to teach that particular content area. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to blend kind of the two extremes that exist in the field of education. So historically, we had a pre-K-12 authorization for bilingual that let a bilingual educator teach anything. And then the pendulum kind of shifted the other way, where we wanted to put more emphasis on a dual-language program where the educator was an expert in both content and bilingual instruction. And what we found is that in some ways our shortage areas are tied to the pendulum swinging so far now to that extreme where we're expecting an educator to be not only the content area expert, but also the bilingual expert. And I think what we're saying is with the shift in the new graduation requirements, we really feel that there are a lot of educators in the pipeline, as Dr. Tucker referenced, who would be amazing bilingual educators and have a solid understanding of the content that they would be teaching within a bilingual setting, but may or may not have the resources, the time, or the energy to go complete those full thirty credits. So theoretically, this would allow somebody that had a minor in their undergraduate program in a particular area to demonstrate that they have enough content area mastery to teach those courses at the secondary level in a bilingual program. So I don't know if that helps answer the question.
I understand how it addresses the particular shortage issue, but I guess I'm focused on the knowledge, the substantive course content question and asking, we can't set up a situation where our bilingual students aren't receiving the same level of substantive education. And if they can receive it from teachers with fewer course credits, then maybe our course credit requirements generally are excessive, is what I'm thinking. Or in fact, are we saying, recognizing the amazing burden that the dual competence requires, we are accepting a lesser level of substance expertise, which I think we need to think about?
So I think it's an analogy.
Sorry, Brian, is it Brian who's on? Alan, if I may, I can maybe speak to this. I actually experienced this when I was in the classroom at middle school. I worked with the bilingual department through reading intervention. And very often, I worked with fabulous bilingual teachers. And the kids, my students would need assistance in social studies, maybe in science. need assistance in social studies, maybe in science. Um, and the bilingual, we would have to free up the bilingual teacher to be able to go in there, not to teach the course, but to be there for assistance when they could have actually taught the course. Fine. I mean, it was, so I, I don't think by any means if they're not prepared, I think what, I know for my district and we, I'm sure they're still dealing with it now, um, the shortage was always there and we had some of our very, very best people, but because of the certification, they weren't able to be the classroom teacher. Yet, to service our L students and our bilingual children, we would free, free them up, that we actually had two certified teachers in the classroom at the same time when it really wasn't necessary because they could take over. Um, and it, it also served like with our, some of our bilingual paras were the same way. You know, if the teacher happened to be out, we'd have to hire someone that, you know, by a certified sub to come in, but the para would teach the class all day. Because they were, their content knowledge is there. It's just because, as, um, it was explained earlier, I know it used to be an open window as K to twelve, and then we closed that window so much that it hurts certain areas. Um, you know, I always think of that. I have, my certification was K to twelve. You would never want me teaching physics, ever. But because that's when I received my certification forty something years ago, that's what I had. And then they closed even regular ed windows so much. Um, but in particular, we have found with bilingual, and this is districts all over the state, we just can't get the folks. And to go back and get a full, you're, you're talking about really getting a full degree in math or social studies is, is a big burden and they're teaching anyway. So they're not, that's not something they're willing to do. So I think this, this piece is, is most important and by no means does it lessen the instruction that our bilingual children are getting. At least it didn't when I was.
And Ms. Benham, I thank you for, I thank you for stating that. Also, we would like for you to know that we spent a lot of time with Dr. Gladys Labas, who works here with us, who's really an expert in this area. And she did conduct many focus groups with bilingual teachers around this topic. And so we did hear from not only Gladys, but those that are in the field. And, and that is what they have echoed to us. It really is a burden for them to go back, uh, and they are more than capable and able and willing to, to teach in these areas.
And just to echo the, go ahead. I was just going to say to echo Dr. Tucker's comment, you know, the, the recommendations in this proposal really came out of the CCSSO Teacher Table Initiative that was conducted over the last two years to look at shortage areas where we specifically focused on special education and bilingual education. And the proposals in a lot of ways is a direct result of feedback from the field as a result of that teacher table experience and what they felt were the best steps forward to mitigate some of the unintended barriers that existed with testing, um, and to in some ways make sure that they were addressing the needs of students across, across the state and, um, looking at how do we maintain that dual language program mentality of where you have somebody that's a content area expert and a bilingual expert simultaneously?
Thank you, Chris. And, and what I wanted to add, I think it, it was said very well by, um, Chris in Shawana, and I appreciate, um, Aaron's example, uh, from the field. Um, you know, Chairman Taylor, your question's a good one. I think we're always going to be looking at ways that we could, um, reduce barriers to certification while maintaining high standards and making sure that we're putting, um, highly qualified people in front of classrooms. So that question is going to be one that we're always going to be, uh, looking at and saying, how do we address the issue by removing unnecessary barriers? In this case, the alternative for many of our students is being in a classroom with someone that speaks not one word of Spanish, not doing well, although that person is certified. Um, and, um, ultimately not getting any content knowledge anyway, because they're, they're not getting it in the language that they understand. Um, you know, I'm really pleased that this proposal came forward. I, I, I wholeheartedly support it because I also was, remember being a principal of a school where, uh, I saw the impact when we have substitutes that are, maybe don't have bilingual certification and then after thirty-nine days having to put another person in there and just the negative experience that it has for our kids. I think this opens the door to allowing better experiences for our learners. We're going to continue to monitor it. Obviously, we would want, uh, content experts also. So if they have that background or if we can provide professional learning opportunities, that'd be a plus. But I think this is a step in the right direction to remove barriers and meet the needs of our learners where they are. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not questioning that. I think that's right. I'm just raising the question whether if we can do it in this very particular context, we ought to be looking at doing it in a broader context.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. We are, and, um, this is the first one we're bringing forward and, uh, there may be more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. The other question is, I had one. I've lost a little bit of track of where we are. I'm sorry.
I believe Laura can continue with.
Yeah, I mean, that was the third and final part of that, that one proposal dealing with just the, um, bilingual educator certificate. So I, I can move on if you'd like me to, to the last talent office proposal, which concerns the resident educator certificate. That's the next one that, um, I have in my list.
Thank you.
Okay, I will move forward with that. So this proposal, um, is expanding access, um, in its, in the simplest explanation to the Connecticut educator or Connecticut resident educator certificate. Um, it's removing a GPA requirement of a three point O or higher and a testing barrier, and it's expanding access to state, a state board approved masters of teaching programs, which are not currently allowed to participate, um, or avail themselves of this program. Currently, I believe it is only, um, the arcs that are allowed to, so we are expanding that. And I don't know, for those of you who don't know or are not familiar, I know, I, they did ask for an explanation, um, during the legislation policy development, um, subcommittee, that the resident educator certificate is a pathway into the profession for aspiring educators, where under, um, the supervision and mentorship of a veteran educator or a building administrator, this certificate authorizes the aspiring educator to be employed as a teacher of record while simultaneously enrolled in a state board of education approved preparation program leading to certification. So it's, this proposal is both expanding access to, um, and, uh, the possible expansion of utilization of this certificate as a viable pathway into the profession for candidates enrolled, as I said, in both arcs and MATs, the, the masters of teaching, um, certification programs.
Any questions?
All right. Okay, so, um, moving on, the next three proposals that we have are from, um, legal affairs. The first proposal, um, is an act concerning technical changes to laws requiring fingerprinting in schools. And this really is, when it says technical, it is a very technical change. So state law mandates that school employees have national criminal history record checks done, um, which requires access to the FBI database. The FBI requires that state statutes mandate that background checks for school employees are in two lists, one of them being governmental and the other being non-governmental entities. They want them listed separately. The FBI classifies charter school governing boards and cooperative arrangements as non-public. So all this is doing is moving those two entities, um, from where they currently are listed in the government public list to the non-government, non-public list in statute.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, next. Moving on, to proposal number five. Um, so this also deals with background checks, but it actually has nothing to do with the other one. Um, I get them a little confused, but they don't have anything to do with each other. So this is an act concerning revisions to the laws regarding charter school background checks. So this proposal changes the way in which criminal background checks are conducted on charter school governing council members and members of charter management organizations. The Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, or DES, um, has indicated that based on FBI protocols, the checks, um, are unable to be implemented as written in the current version of the statute. So again, um, this is being proposed as a result of input from DES and from the FBI and pertains to background checks only for charter school governing council members and charter management organizations. This does not have an effect on background checks for teachers that are teaching at those schools. Um, these two entities will still be required to conduct background checks. It just won't be FBI checks. They would need to be done by another qualified vendor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Questions?
Um, the last proposal from legal, um, so this proposal was recommended by the auditors of public accounts as a result of what happened, um, with Path Academy. And so many of you who are, are longstanding members of the board remember it, um, all too well. Uh, so this proposal would allow the Department of Education to institute a civil action against any person, firm, corporation, business, CMO, um, that it has reason to believe misused state funds. And then it would allow, it does not ma, it does not mandate, but it would allow, um, the attorney general to pursue the matter further if they deem it's appropriate to do so. And then any money, it is my understanding that any money that is recovered would then be, um, deposited back into the general fund.
No questions? Okay, next.
All right. Okay, so the next two proposals pertain to the technical high schools. Um, the first one is very technical, um, and it actually came before you last year. So you voted on this last year, but then it got caught up in the session, um, that didn't end up happening. So this proposal, um, clears up just a conflict in statute regarding the appointment of the CTEC superintendent. Right now, there are two conflicting areas of statute that have the appointment being made in two different ways. So we're just trying to clear that up. Um, until July one of twenty twenty-three, the technical school board is going to recommend to the commissioner to accept or reject a candidate for superintendent. But then after July one, twenty twenty-three, so that's a year after the scheduled break of the CTEC system from the department, when there is an established executive director in place. Um, so after, after July one, twenty twenty-three, the executive director is the one as the head of the agency that then would be making the decision based on the board's recommendation to him or her.
Any questions? Hey.
Okay, the next one, um, so before I go into this proposal, I first, I have to give Superintendent Webby a great deal of credit for all of the progress that he has made and the work that he's done in reforming the admissions process at CTECs to be more, um, inclusive, um, and, and having taken over, since he has taken over, um, as being superintendent, he really deserves a lot of credit, um, that that's happened under his watch. And I believe that this proposal kind of moves in the direction of a next step in that process. Um, so some of you may be familiar with this because it's been batting around the capital, but it hasn't ever come before you as a body. Um, it has come up for the last several years and the Federal Department of Justice's Office of Civil Rights, along with many special ed advocates and legislators alike, have wanted to remove, um, section ten dash seventy-six Q sub C from statute, um, which currently as written allows the technical schools to make a determination that they can no longer accommodate the needs of a special education student and therefore they can send them back to their home district. So what we are proposing here is to eliminate that section. Um, and in, in its place, we want there to be a section put in that requires the local sending district, so an LEA or a regional board, to call a pre-PPT meeting, if you will, a transition meeting for before the child is even accepted into the technical high school, where the technical high school would have a seat at the table and they would go through the IEP to see what the services are that this child would be requiring. And I think at that point, it would be appropriate for the technical high school to make a case or at least let there be concerns known if they do not think the technical high school is an appropriate place for that child, um, to receive its education. So we're, we're looking to replace, um, the current sub C with the sub C that I just outlined.
So this proposal, the, the summary didn't make that clear to me. This proposal applies only to students who are receiving special education services and transferring or seeking to transfer the technical system?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Um, our last proposal that I have before you today has four sections and you've seen all of them before. Um, these were all resubmittals from last year in a, in a technical revision bill that obviously, again, did not make it anywhere. These all basically look to remove either duplicative reporting requirements or parts of statute that are just obsolete at this point in time. So the first section does remove obsolete statutory language regarding an academic advancement program, which used to exist, um, as a thing in a district. And it outlined ways that mastery could be shown for eleventh and twelfth graders. But in two thousand and thirteen, legislation allowing local boards of education to determine the eligible credits based on demonstration of mastery made this statute irrelevant. So we're just looking to have it removed.
Thank you.
The next section also removes obsolete statutory language, um, regarding, uh, continuing education classes. So this is the one where, um, also in two thousand and thirteen, legislation was passed that no longer requires districts to report all of their professional learning offered for the purposes of tracking continuing education to the department, but it did not take away the department's responsibility to collect that information. And so what we've left, what we have been left with is we send out a survey that is self-reported and is completely not reliable, and we're just looking to get their, the reporting requirement taken out.
Sounds obvious.
Okay. Uh, the next one has to do with CERC, and this kind of stems from when CERC was more under the agency, um, prior to, um, becoming their own quasi-public agency, which was effective in June of twenty fourteen. Um, it's since that time, the department has no statutory oversight over CERC. And, um, they're now subject to review by the auditors of public accounts. One of those came out yesterday, I believe, for CERC, um, as, and they're, um, subject to any state regulation related to state procurement or, or any of that. So they, they do all of their own reporting now, so we're just trying to remove a department reporting requirement for CERC activities.
Next.
Okay, this is the last one, I promise. Um, so the last one, it removes language regarding a duplicative reporting requirement. Um, and this had to do with financial fiscal stuff mostly, I believe. The department, um, collects various fiscal and student data, which is now available as, as it wasn't before when the statute was originally written. Um, it's available on our data portal EdSite, um, as well as on the, um, the, we launched, I think it was two years ago now in August, the education financial, um, system, which, which, uh, collects annual expenditure data at the school and district level. So I mean, the, the report basically was asking for things that now are available either in that system publicly or in EdSite publicly. Um, and so we are also just looking to have that reporting requirement removed.
Sounds like a good idea.
And with that, I am done.
Okay. Um, so what, where do we, do we need, we need a separate vote on this? I guess we do.
I think we, it's one resolution, and I believe in the past, we've taken them all up together unless someone objected and wanted to remove one for a separate vote.
Right. If we already, I've, I've lost track. I'm sorry. If we already had a motion to put this onto the table or no?
Chair Taylor? It's Karen. Um, so we had, uh, at the legislation and policy committee, we had a very robust discussion about all these proposals, great work on the staff, and I'll move, uh, approval of the package.
Thank you, sir. Second.
Second, Bonnie.
Okay, the most, the motion was moved by Lopez and Reyes go on when we started.
Okay, good. We. We did what we were supposed to do. Can't remember. We want to call the roll. Do we need a roll call? Is there any objections to this or we treat it as unanimous? Okay, all in favor, just raise your hands.
Aye.
See everybody's hand. There, now I got you, Doc. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a motion on 6B.
Move.
Second. Is there any discussion? We're just receiving this. Any discussion?
We need to have the presentation. That's the curriculum, right?
Yes, if it's okay with you, Chair Taylor, I could take it from here, but I want to make sure that's okay.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
Thank you very much, Chair. And Laura, thank you. Nice job on that. And before I do this, I'm gonna just sneak in an opportunity here to acknowledge, you know, with some of the certification, we had Dr. Tucker and Chris Todd on. I also want to acknowledge Dr. Gladys Lavis, whose name was mentioned, who really joined our team recently and is really looking at how our policies either help or hurt our English learners. We know that's a large growing population, so we're fortunate to have her on our team. She has over 30 years' experience in this and we can see the result of that already. She's the madrina to EL experts in the state and we're fortunate to have her on board. I also want to acknowledge, I saw her earlier and I want to just quickly acknowledge and congratulate Dr. Jane Gates. And there she is. Jane, congratulations to you. You're now the interim, you'll be the interim president of the Connecticut State University System as they search for a permanent president. And couldn't have picked a better person. Congratulations to you, we're proud of you. And we're here with you. Anything you need, we're here to support you. Congratulations, very, very well deserved. We know President Marco Jaikin is retiring and Jane was asked to take the reins until the final process is completed. So congratulations to you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's always wonderful to acknowledge hard workers and people that are doing great things for Connecticut students when we have the opportunity. You know, this next piece is something that I think has been long awaited. Marian Wright Edelman said, "You can't be what you can't see." And, you know, we were introduced to Rochelle Brown, our Connecticut Teacher of the Year for this upcoming year, and she's done in her years of education, collected 21 years, books that allow her students to see the beautiful diversity in our state and see themselves in their literature. And let me tell you, this next presentation is something that, to me, as a Latino, as a former student going through a K-12 system here in Connecticut, as a father of children who are going through the school system, I couldn't be prouder. I couldn't be prouder. And the folks that are going to be presenting it will get into the details of it, but I just ask that, we recognize that this is an important step moving forward. I said when I became commissioner, I still feel it. It shouldn't take legislation for us to make sure we're doing what we need to do to present curriculum that is reflective of the learners that we have in front of. It shouldn't take legislation. We need to move forward on this aggressively and we will. But I'm really, really pleased to, I'll be turning it over to Desi in a second, but before I do that, thank you, CERC, for your amazing work in this process. Ingrid, it's not easy to balance so much passion and so many different perspectives on wanting to make this right, make this perfect. So a big shout out to CERC, to the legislators. There's so many of them to mention, I don't want to get in trouble by mentioning some and not others. The legislators have been champions here and the supporters in the field also. I want to thank Melissa Hickey for her tremendous work behind the scenes, making this come together. And thank you, Melissa, for your work. And Stephen Armstrong. We all know Stephen Armstrong and his work too. And there's so many others to thank, but I want to acknowledge those folks and say that I'm proud of this and I ask for a favorable recommendation when it's all said and done because this is a step in the right direction. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to our Deputy Commissioner for Academics and Innovation, Desi.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good to see everyone and be with you this morning. You know, when Public Act 1912 was signed into law in 2019, our colleagues at CERC and at the agency went to work on this. And I want to just start by thanking my friend and colleague, Ingrid Kennedy, and her team at CERC because of the amount of work that went into this over the past year. She was supported, her team was supported by folks on our side. And I want to take an opportunity to thank Dr. Melissa Hickey, who on SDE side has been involved with this from the beginning and has worked with and supported Ingrid Kennedy and that CERC team. And I also want to thank Stephen Armstrong, who has worked very closely with Melissa and Ingrid and the CERC team over the past year. Most recently, as the Commissioner mentioned, we've been joined by Dr. Gladys Lavis, who has also worked to support the team and folks in place. The scope of work has been enormous. I know that there have been nine committees that have been set up and managed by CERC, over 150 people on the advisory group, including students, a series of webinars, convenings, committees, just the amount of time and energy that went into this. And even the expert panel, I know that was mentioned this morning. A lot of folks have put a lot of time and energy into this, including you all on the Academic Standards and Assessment Committee. I know you've seen this a number of times, but I just want to end by saying this is why we're here. This is the work that we get excited about. This is the work that drives what we do every day. And couldn't be prouder of this and just honored to be a part of this working group of professionals that have brought this before you today. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Irene Ferezi.
It's now good afternoon, so thank you. We do come to you, State Board of Education members, and certainly Commissioner Cardona. And thank you Deputy Commissioner Nismith for that introduction. So I'll certainly keep my remarks brief and underscore everything that has already been said, but we do come to you with exuberance and immense pride as we present this curriculum, African-American, Black, Puerto Rican, and Latino studies. In your board packet, you do have the executive summary, which does compile all of the work that has been done to date, outlining that development of the statewide curriculum. You also have a number of supporting documents that have been seen by the Academic Standards and Assessment Subcommittee. Hopefully combined, you'll see the potential and how they provide that comprehensive overview to support the decision you're about to make. I may not have been a part of the work since the beginning. I received the message of this curriculum and the potential of it when I was in district as an Assistant Superintendent. And I am so humbled now to be a part of the process and to be standing before you virtually to present this work going forward. I do want to once again recognize those that are with me today to answer your questions from our Department of Education, Dr. Melissa Hickey, Director of Reading, Dr. Gladys Lavis, our Director of Equity and Languages. From CERC, we do have Dr. Ingrid Kennedy, our Executive Director, Dr. Michelle Lebron Griffin, Education Consultant, Nita Diaz, a consultant, and Paquita Jarman Smith, a consultant. Listening in is Stephen Armstrong, our Social Studies Education Consultant for the State Department of Education. And once again, I would like to take the opportunity to recognize all of them for their support, their passion, tireless commitment to this work because they all have been critical to the development process to bring this forward to you. We do seek a favorable approval. This is bold and future forward. So a few key points that are outlined again in the executive summary, that this is the result of the Public Act that was passed in June 2019. CERC was written into the legislation as a lead partner to coordinate the process and they have done a fantastic job at that. This will be the first integrated model of a statewide curriculum for all of our districts that we serve. It will be an elective, a full-year course at the high school level with a semester-by-semester focus on the studies with spiraling concepts. There are approximately right now 10 comprehensive units that we will be able to provide districts with. And one of the cornerstones of this is an inquiry-based approach, which will align with our inquiry process in our social studies frameworks. Schools may begin to offer this course in 2021, 22, but they must offer the course in 22, 23. All of this has been brought forward to you as a result of many teachers and students coming to the table. Their voice should be, has been heard and loud and clear, and they are part of the revision process along the way. On page two of the executive summary, we did outline the timeline of communication to the Subcommittee and the public. And also on page three, I want to point out that we've outlined the next steps as a result of today's decision and discussion, those next steps that are obligated in Public Act 19-12 to continue the development of the coordinated implementation plan for districts in fall of 2022. I'm confident that you share our excitement for this unique opportunity for, you know, as a State Department of Education, where we are truly reducing barriers to learning and having these experiences just to explore the struggles and perspectives and accomplishments of African-American, Black, Puerto Rican people in the United States. We are available as a team right now to answer any questions and to allow the board to have a discussion. Thank you.
I would like to acknowledge that serving on the Academic Standards and Assessment, we were, one of the things that we truly appreciate was the folks coming to us and asking for our insight and looking at the many experts who you went out and reached out to. And you mentioned Agnes Quinones, a great friend who knows a lot about the Latino Puerto Rican, and also my other friend, Dr. Foster. So I mean, you've gone out and you've reached out to folks who know about the curriculum content, who understand the importance of us meeting this type of curriculum for our African-American and our Puerto Rican, Latino students, who we go back to looking at their identity. And I talked a lot about this in the task force and the committee that I served on. So I acknowledge all the work and all the people that you involved, including focus groups with students. That was, I found that to be very fascinating, that you engage our student body into the decision of this curriculum. In addition to that, the letters of support from, you know, Dr. Elsa Nunez and again, Ben Foster and so many other folks that I know have a heart for this and I know that are going to support the work that's going to be put on in servicing this curriculum.
Thank you.
So thank you. No, thank you.
Yeah, I want to follow up, I will, because at the Academic Standards Committee, we had like an hour and a half opportunity to review the curriculum and we endorsed what is being presented today. I also want to acknowledge my colleague, Donald Harris, because I know he worked very hard to ensure that this was available, that this was done. And, you know, we truly appreciate that effort and it's really, it's like a Christmas gift to have this presented to us at the December meeting, so thank you.
If I could, thank you for that comment, Stella. You know, if you stay in this place long enough, you touch a lot of people out there. And I was glad to see Gladys, Gladys, who I knew back from the DIAC and Cass days when I was a high school principal and an athletic director. You know, what's really important, Dr. Cardona didn't want to get in trouble by naming names, and which my mother always told me not to do that, but sometimes didn't listen to mommy. And, but one name that did not get mentioned here today, Dr. Foster mentioned what we started in the summer of 2018 at the Bloomfield Board of Education. But that was created by legislator Bobby Gibson. Bobby was the one that came up with this idea and he was the one that saw it through at the legislature along with Senator Doug McCrory, who is currently the co-chair of the Education Committee. So, you know, there was a lot of stuff that went into this to get it passed before it even got to CERC. But I was involved initially with creating the curriculum at CERC until my plate just got too full and I had to back away. But I just want to echo all the comments that have been made. CERC did an amazing job in coordinating with the State Department. And I just look forward to this amazing legislation going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Don. You know, you're right. Those are some of the names I was going to mention, but since you mentioned it, I also want to add to that Dr. James Thompson, who I know was a big cheerleader of this moving forward. So thank you for acknowledging that. So if anyone's going to get in trouble, it's going to be you, not me. Applause there, thank you.
I also want to just add that I really appreciated being able to review the document and the supporting material that was submitted. I appreciate the curriculum in its boldness around not shying away from, and really struggling with the realities of the history. I appreciated the centering of so much that's typically marginalized and the ability to, for students to be able to dig into that. But I really, one piece that really brought me joy was the section on radical reimagining and that, opening that door for students and for educators to work in partnership around a radical reimagining of what can be going forward, I think is very exciting. So I look forward to it. My only sadness is that it's an elective. I know that's got nothing to do with this, that's the legislation, but my only sadness is that it's not required for all students. Well done, great, great work. I'm happy to see this move forward.
Before I drop off here, which I will do, from the public sector power end, I expressed earlier that I commend everyone, all of the writers, those contributors who developed this really progressive program here and course of study. But, and I firmly believe that the, this particular curricula will lead to community of learners, where individuals are informed, they are reaffirmed, it enhances the self-efficacy of those who within these groups, but it also provides an opportunity for others in the majority population to appreciate or develop an appreciation and awareness of American history. So I'm very, very pleased with this and I particularly love the inquiry-based pedagogy. I think educators don't have to have all the answers, but we do need to know the right questions to ask. Thank you, guys. I'm having to drop off, but great work. And we're there at CSCU to support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I want to say, I think Phil is an enormous, what did you, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, well, yeah, I think this is wonderful. It's much needed. And I was just wondering, how are the teachers being trained for this?
Excellent question, thank you. We are working together, we recognize first of all, that there needs to be a very intentional professional learning plan developed for teachers. And we've already identified key learning competencies or outcomes for our teachers. So we are in the middle of developing that plan, Dr. Lavis and Dr. Hickey with our CERC partners to develop that plan. So that is present and ongoing.
And is there one particular textbook or what are the sources for this?
Just so I understand, you mean the instructional resources?
Yeah, the instructional resources. Is there one particular textbook or how does that work?
I think it's a suite of resources that we are identifying, as we called bundles of resources. But certainly, I can begin with either Dr. Hickey or Dr. Lavis and certainly Dr. Candidate is to speak to some of the other resources that we have been reviewing, but it won't be one single textbook. We're going beyond that, it'll be a suite of resources. So perhaps, Dr. Lavis, would you like to share a little bit more about that? Just unmute.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me now? Okay. Yes, you're correct.
Yes, you're correct. Uh, most of the resources are going to be primary resources. And also, we have developed with, with CIRC, a speaker type, having people come in and speak and address the students in certain topics. But mostly it's not one textbook, but it's going to be many, many resources and most of them are primary resources.
Okay. And just one other, uh, comment. I saw the legislation calls for one semester. So, I think it's good that we're going through a full year with the course.
Yeah, I believe, I may call on Dr. Hickey because in the, um, the implementation or in the development phase, things had changed along the way based on the critical feedback we had received.
Sure.
I had a comment to kind of pick up what Karen talked about. It's just, uh, it's an elective, it's not a required course. And how do we make sure that this information gets put into U.S. history? That the course that everyone has to take. So, it's not just, you know, the kids or the students who decide to take this elective that learn this. Everybody needs to know this.
Correct. So, perhaps I can call on, uh, Dr. Kennedy to speak to some of that because there were a lot of conversations that were taking place and certainly with Steve Armstrong's expertise at the table. Um, but perhaps she would like to speak to, um, the promise that we are making to that.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, members of the board. This is Ingrid Kennedy, not a doctor yet. I am so honored to be called a doctor. I'm going to tell you in three years, it is going to be done. I'm going for it. So, it's a pleasure to be with all of you today. Excited. I heard the comments this morning from the, from all those who presented their, their public comment and we're so excited. For those of you who know me well, I am a passionate mess and I am holding my passion back. So, I'm going to, I'm going to answer the question directly. This is the beginning. The entry point is the social studies is the history. So, we are setting this at the beginning of the effort with the collaboration. When the legislators, they are very clear that the goal is for this to happen across every single grade level. We see this as the entry point. This could not have been done without the collaboration of the CIRC amazing team and also without the collaboration of our partners. Therefore, we are forging ahead. I like to call this the beginning of the rest of our future together. So, I'm very excited about it, but we know we are speaking that the entry point is to social studies. And I know Dr. Hickey's passion and Dr. Armstrong's right here. So, uh, this is just exciting. So, you probably can hear that in my voice. I hope I answered your question, but it is necessary. We need the momentum in order to, to provide to be able to answer the question. This is a collective effort. Today is so important because we want to make sure that the momentum is built so that we are asked for this to be part of the full cycle of our students and our schools. Thank you.
I hope that happens.
And then just to piggyback on what everyone has been saying, um, yes, indeed, what we've already been having conversations about is adjusting and looking at curriculum work so that it will do exactly what you're saying, enhancing units that are already established for the course that you are referring to. And we are, we are requesting and suggesting that schools use this course not alone, but in a pathway. So, really talking about what courses can students take so they can take that deeper dive and be much more knowledgeable at the end. So, yes, it's a one-year course, answer your question before, um, which would be the two semesters worth to make one course.
I, I just want to very briefly say that I'm so happy that Ingrid had a chance to talk because Ingrid, as she mentioned, she always brings her passion to everything she does. And in learning, we do know that we need both the intellectual and the passionate side to really engage the students. And I think the work that has been done through CIRC and through everybody, the experts, uh, and again, I don't want to repeat names because like the commissioner said, I'm going to omit a few of them. But, you know, it's that combination that is being translated into the classroom and that will be so powerful. Uh, again, I'm, I'm just delighted. This is a, this is truly a Christmas gift. So, thank you so much to everyone. And Ingrid, thank you for the bottom of my heart also.
Any other comments? I, I want to join Stella and everyone else in congratulating everybody and thanking everybody who had to do, uh, who worked on this. I think it's going to make an enormous difference in the way our students understand the world in which they live. And all, all of us understand each other and that can only be something that will be good for our country and good for the world. So, you know, since the job of education is to empower the next generations to improve whatever it is that we've left them and to them. I think this is a vital piece in doing that and I, I look forward to seeing it implemented in our schools. I do have one little, just picky correction note. At the bottom of page five, um, in the big box, it says, "The Nile was the only river in the world that flows from south to north." And then if you flip the page in the middle of the big paragraph from the top, it says, "Why, the Nile was the only river in the world that flows from north to south." So, it would be good to decide which one it is. Any other comments?
This is actually one of Florida that does that too, but.
In both directions?
No, no, it just goes, it goes the wrong way.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor. And, um, I know we're gonna, uh, there, there's going to be a vote soon. You said it very well, uh, Chairman Taylor. Akita, Michelle, Nitsa, Ingrid, thank you, uh, for your, for your work. You know, we're going to be hearing about attendance later and how we're tracking data. Let's not forget the connection between kids wanting to be in school and kids attending school. And when we see that our attendance rate with our Black and Latino students is worse, when we see that our achievement outcomes, our, uh, academic outcomes are, are disparate in Connecticut, we have to take real action. And real action is being bold about saying, we're going to put something in front of them where they feel they can connect. Um, and this is not just for Black and Latino students. Uh, really, I think there's equal benefit to students who are not Black and Latino to take this course. You know, we hear about windows and doors, uh, that curriculum serves as a window into other cultures. This is a, a window into another culture for many students and we hope all students in Connecticut, uh, consider taking this course. We know that a policy is only as good as the paper it's written on unless there's good implementation. So, we're eager to roll up our sleeves and partner with our districts who are looking for creative ways to implement this so that there's such a demand for these courses that they have to teach many sections of it. And this is, we're just kicking the door down now. We really need to consider how we're doing this K-12, not only for Black and Latino, but for other groups that might have been underrepresented. I'm, I'm excited about this. This is why I'm excited about being the Commissioner of Education. Partners like CIRC and, and the dedicated team that we have and a, a progressive board that's willing to roll up our sleeves and say, let's, let's do this. And it's not going to be perfect. It's not, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna learn as we go along. Remember, experience is the best teacher, but this is so worth doing and I'm excited about this. Thank you all of you that have been a part of it. Uh, those were named, those weren't named and there's a lot of work ahead. I'm excited about this work. But first, we have to vote on it.
I believe we're ready for the vote. I'll do it. We need a roll call.
Um, we, we could still do the hands raised, but because it's, um, if you consider it history-making and would like to do a roll call, I will do that. Okay, Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lopez?
Sí. Sí se puede.
And Dana?
An astounding yes.
Bonnie Burr?
An enthusiastic yes.
Karen DeBoz Walton?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Elwood X three?
A very hearty yes.
Donald Harris?
Because I took all my words. Heck, yes.
Thank you. Okay, Martha Prue?
Yes, very well done.
Awolda Raisco? Yes. Sí. Malia Seavey?
Hard to be the last one, but most certainly and emphatically, yes.
So, so we have an overwhelming vote of yes, yes, yes. And so, um, action item agenda six B, the Black-Latino curriculum has passed. Oh, I'm crying.
Do we know if we're a leader in this? Are, are other states doing this sort of thing?
We are.
Are we leading the path?
States are not doing this. You just, this is history right now. This is so exciting. Wow. Nice, nice.
They're making me cry also. Oh, Stella, don't cry. Cry to joy, but I want to see this, not an elective, hopefully then as a mandated course so that students come prepared when they come to college with a three-credit college. It could be a college bearing credit. That's, that's, that's another one to fight for. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
I have an issue of privilege, if you may, if I allow me for a moment. Um, yesterday, I had to take my husband to the emergency room. He's okay, but I was there, we were there till two o'clock in the morning. So, I need to, this meeting has been very long, so I need to, he's okay now. I just stepped out and he's okay. But I need to, to take care of him. So, I'm going to be leaving the meeting. But I, I wanted to let everybody, all my fellow board members, that, uh, that I want to wish them the best, uh, in the holiday season, especially the new year. We're hoping that twenty twenty-one will be quite different from twenty twenty and that I'm so grateful and honored to be part of this group. Thank Commissioner Cardona and all these staff members. And I wanted to end today after this was passed because I think this is the best way to go and, um, there, there couldn't be a better, a better celebration. And so, congratulations to everybody and to the great work that the, um, department does. So, I'll see you later, okay?
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Where are we? Six C?
Okay, so we've, we've done six C, so we need to go to report of the chair?
The chair has been very diligently doing nothing outside of the house or his small backyard. I have nothing to report.
Um, actually, you have, you have one item to report regarding the January twenty twenty-one meeting?
Oh, well, thank you. Why don't you remind me of that item? I can't.
Okay. Well, in June, the, the board had voted for the twenty twenty-one board schedule. However, there were two months and January being one of them, that there were two option dates, January seventh,
I guess.
Thursday, January seventh, and then are Wednesday, January thirteenth. And the issue are, the, basically, this is because we have a guidance that we do not hold a board meeting on the day that the Connecticut General Assembly convenes or, um, or, or closes. So, um, they convene, um, January sixth and so the next option would be the next day, January seventh. And the board has, um, do you have it now? The board, um, has voted, um, to go with January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'd already made that change on my calendar. I didn't realize we needed to raise that. And what?
Well, we want to share it with the public. I'm sorry, Chair Taylor?
Yes, I didn't, I didn't catch what you just said.
No, um, I just said, no, we needed to also share that with the public and then we'll post it on our website, the schedule, but we needed to publicly announce the January meeting date.
Okay, thank you. So, where are we now?
So, well, I, there are no financial matters.
And there's, uh, as I said, nothing for the chair to report and consent agenda. We don't have anything. Good way. Okay, Miguel, I think you've given your update, but I'm not sure.
So, I know this is, um, probably a good time to leave when we're feeling, uh, that euphoric, uh, feeling of accomplishing something that's pretty instrumental. There is one more update, but so, uh, I do want to thank again, uh, CIRC. I see them on the screen. Thank you, thank you. You're partners in this whole process and you, the way you did it, the quality that, that you, um, created, set a bar really high. So, as we move forward, thinking about how we can continue this work, the bar is up here. And because what we don't want is to present courses that provide low rigor and low pedagogy. We're excited. We're excited. Thank you. So, um, uh, Chairman Taylor, the, the presentation or the, the brief overview of agency update is really going to be explaining to you what we're doing in Connecticut, which I don't know of any other state that's doing it, to look at the attendance data of our learners so that we can address issues and identify, um, you know, how our models of education, whether it's full in-person, hybrid or remote, is working. So, I'm going to turn it over quickly to, um, Chief Performance Officer, Ajigal Polatrician, to explain to you kind of what we're doing so that as these data come out, you hear it first. Um, and as we share what we're noticing in, in Connecticut, you have this information. So, Ajig?
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I want to invite, uh, or, or see if Deputy Commissioner Russell Tucker wanted to say something about attendance before I started.
I'm okay. Uh, Ajig, you can go ahead and then we can answer questions at the end.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Charlene. I will briefly share my screen. Uh, I, I will keep this update to a few minutes, three to five minutes at the most. You're all familiar with our data portal EdSite. Commissioner has asked me to share the, um, the, the information that we have been collecting, the systems we have set up really to track student attendance. Yes, we have, school has opened in so many different ways this year with in-person, hybrid, remote, and sometimes experiencing all three in a month for a school, going from in-person to potentially hybrid, then the remote and then back in hybrid. Schools have been, have been really being as flexible as they possibly can. So, we have, uh, made the commitment to track student attendance, not at the end of the year, but on a monthly basis. And I gave a brief update at the last meeting on this. So, I'll try to, try to really speed it up. We, we have our definition of attendance, which is really designed to be at least half a day. We've given guidance to districts. And, uh, you know, attendance is, may seem like a simple concept, but it's really a powerful measure because if the student is not present, they can't be engaged in learning like the excellent curriculum that we have, we just heard about. If they're not present, they can't engage with that. And if they don't engage with the learning, they're ultimately not going to learn. So, uh, attendance, while a simple measure of presence, it's a really important precursor to everything else. Um, and I want to thank our districts because they are giving us this data. And I want to thank our districts, because they are giving us this data at the student level in terms of attendance. And they're telling us for each day that a student is in, whether the day is in-person or remote, so that we can do fine-grained analysis with it. So just to switch to EdSite briefly, and share with you some of the, the findings. You see this link, this thing on the bottom here that says supporting student participation. If you click on that, it opens up this new page that we have set up to really present this data. We're collecting the attendance data at a kid-level, student-level data on a monthly basis. And what we're seeing overall is that the attendance rate overall in 2021, year-to-date, September and October combined, is slightly lower than what it was in the last school year, 1920 school year. But for our students with high needs, it's, it's even more, it's, it's a little bit more lower this year. And, and just to put these numbers in context, 89, 93, basically a difference of 5% amounts to one day in a month. And if you think of a month as having 20 school days, it's one more absence, one more day of absence. And if you think about, you know, it might seem like not a big amount, but if you think about that type of a pattern over a year, it really adds up. We have taken this difference between high-needs and non-high-needs attendance and created a map to actually showcase where in our districts is attendance this year lagging compared to last year. So we have, we have showcased that as well in, in a visual format, so you can hover over this and kind of see for each district what's going on, what their attendance is this year compared to last year. We have also, I mentioned the difference between in-person and remote. This took a lot of work for our districts to set up, and really most appreciative of the work they do. What we learned from October's attendance is that, you know, about a quarter of our students, 24%, actually attended school every day in-person, and another 12% attended school almost every day in-person. They might have had a few days remote, but at least 16 of those days were in-person for these, for these students. So really, 36, 37% were predominantly in-person. We had about 31.6% of our students in a hybrid format, where they were in school, sort of, you know, in the month of October, between six and 15 days in-person. And then when you look at the mostly remote, you know, that these students, 9.5% were in-person only for about five days. And the fully remote, about 22% did not come to, did not have even one single day in October that was in-person. So to put it another way, is to say that over 77% of our students, so it's all of these groups, actually came to school at least one day in-person during the month of October. But when we look at that fully remote group, you know, the students who were, didn't have even one day of in-person school in October, you know, that's that 22%. But when you look across the groups of students that we typically break our data down into, we see that English learners are disproportionately fully remote in the month of October. And our homeless students who are experiencing homelessness, you know, 42% of them were fully remote. And those who are free meal eligible, and, and this is not the reduced price meal, this is the free meal, which is the, the more rigorous standard, if you will, for determining poverty. 33% of them were unfortunately fully remote as well. And then when we look at the rates of attendance between those days when students are in-person and those days when they're fully remote, what we see is that for all student groups, attendance on those remote days is not as strong as attendance on the in-person days. And, and we know this, but, or we've heard this, and these data kind of affirm that for us, the importance of having students in school in-person. And when you look at for some of our most vulnerable student groups, that disparity between in-person attendance and remote attendance is even greater. So this is the beginning of our, of our collection. We've just done two months where we've actually started the November attendance collection and hope to have that up on this page in the next couple of weeks. So this is, this is groundbreaking and landmark in that we don't know of any other state that's collecting this type of data frequently and monitoring it so closely, given the varied learning model. And just to wrap this up, below here is the learning model data, which basically shows what each school, each district is operating in predominantly. And what we saw is, you know, in, in middle of October, towards the end of October, almost 55% of our districts were predominantly in-person. It's declined a little bit over the past, more recent past. But even this week, we know that our districts in, in several grades that are in-person. So with that, I'll stop and turn it over to Commissioner and Charlene and to take.
I would just say, you know, thank you, Ajig, for sharing that. And I use one example of how this is informing what we're doing almost on a daily basis. As board members know, that addressing the issue of chronic absence in school attendance has been a priority. It's been a priority for the board for several years, and we've been monitoring and working very closely, and we're even strengthening, I mentioned that effort. Just yesterday, our staff lead, Kari Sullivan, met with over 80 educators, district personnel, just to address the issue of, of what to do when students are experiencing homelessness. You saw that in the data slide that Ajig just showed, that that is a, a population group that needs additional attention. And so we are using this data to inform everything that we're doing, engaging community, engaging partners. And actually, we have a webinar that is set, that we will be doing directly for families around supporting engagement and attendance. So we can talk directly with, with families around this issue as well. So just to give you a sense of, it's great, I believe it's groundbreaking as a state that we're doing it, but it truly is informing our action and our internal work together. Desi?
Yeah, and Charlene, the one thing I wanted to add is that, to let the board know that Charlene and I have been meeting with the Opportunity District Superintendents. So one, one of the, the benefits that the Performance Office under Ajig's leadership has been able to pull off is, is really pinpointing on a monthly basis, the attendance by, by, at a kid level, which then allows Charlene and I to have follow-up conversations with superintendents in those districts that are seeing some of the, the need here around supporting students and families and communicating the importance of attendance while we're in this pandemic, and frankly, outside of the pandemic, to be completely honest. So it allows us as an agency to really pinpoint our, our team's efforts and, and all the work that Kari is leading, and it also allows Charlene and I to have very direct conversations and also learn and hear what some of those challenges are from the districts. You know, I, personally, I thought, you know, this was sort of the same group of kids, and it's not. You know, superintendents are telling us, this, this group of kids changes. So once they get some kids back engaged, there's other kids that will, will drop off. And so it's, it, this is a very layered issue, and, and Ajig's work and the Performance Office work has allowed us to be able to pinpoint where we provide our supports. And I would just want to stress the importance of that, because all this was set up in a very small amount of time, what would normally take a year. We, we were able to set up in a, in a couple of weeks and really turn it into actions on our side. So I just wanted to convey that. Thank you, Desi, and Charlene, and Ajig, for, for you and your team's work. So, but I also want to share with you that this is our, our effort to really be as transparent as possible with what we're seeing, to really expose all the warts and pimples of what we have ahead of us. You know, I, I commend the districts who work really hard, in addition to opening schools, to now creating new data systems to collect these data, so that we can look at it. And, you know, in, in some of those districts that are having the biggest challenge, they're also employing some of the best strategies. So, you know, they're trying, they're working hard. I know people are doing home visits. I know they're working with local agencies. So this is really just a way for us to see how we can best support our, our districts, ultimately our students, to get them in. And I commend the work that was done to set this up, not only in short order, but also during a time where there was a lot of anxiety and stress about opening schools. To add this on was, was another layer of work, but well worth it when we're talking about getting students engaged and connected. So thank you, Ajig, for the presentation. Happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Yeah, I do, I, I just want to go back to the, on the chart that you presented, Ajig, the homeless. Homeless. We saw 42.2%. Can you elaborate more as to what's the definition of homeless? And, and then I know that Commissioner Cardona, he, he addressed some of my questions about intervention, okay? Home visits, I heard that. But homeless, because there was a program a few weeks ago on 2020, I don't know if you all have, you can, we can research on it. Tampa, Florida, they had, you know, the issue of homeless, they had the issue of, a lot of students were transitioning from, because they were evicted from homes because of the, as we know, the economy. So I'm curious to know, what is it that you're finding that's impacting this population that are homeless? Because that's, it's heartbreaking to see that 42.2. I just want to get more, more insight as to, you know, what direction are we moving and how are we supporting these families?
Thank you. I think Charlene can probably respond best with some of the work that's happening in the agency. Charlene?
Sure, Commissioner. And, you know, going on, I think at 1:00 today is an event with, that includes the Department of Housing, addressing housing instability and its, its impact on education. Right? We know how critically important that is. So a part of this is working across our agency systems, right, to look at what, how are we, number one, finding kids who are indeed meet that definition of being experiencing homelessness? What does it mean? This is something that we've done around the McKinne Vinton Federal Program, and so we have a staff member here who is responsible for that program, who is the state coordinator for that program. And also, in that federal program, there's a requirement that districts all also identify staff members who are responsible in that space, as well to identify students and to help to work with supports and with our other, other agencies. So that's the group that we're working with, but it really is a cross-agency effort. We've convened our district homeless liaisons in the past to address this issue and continue to engage them. That's why some of them were on the call, I mentioned that happened, or talked Tuesday, yesterday, to unearth, right, the issue of housing instability, what supports maybe they're in the community to support, to support our, our families in that regard, and how we can address the, the education needs as well. So that's, we've worked with the Connecticut Coalition to End Homelessness. They are part of our network as well, that we're working with to identify causes, to address stable housing. And I know our board member, Karen Walton, is probably also has some things to add around that, but that is work that we're doing at the state level.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Weld, if I, if I may, your question reminded me of one other thing I want to just point out here in, in this space. And that is, you know, we wouldn't have this information if it weren't for the partnerships that we have with our districts. You know, a lot of folks on the district side, from superintendents to IT folks, the, the support staff, make this data collection possible and timely for us to be able to turn around and, and really provide support. So I just, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the folks on the district side, who every week and every month are engaged with Ajig and the Performance Office, so that we can have this data in, in a timely fashion and make it actionable.
Can I ask a question about the, the homeless kids, the homeless students doing it remote? How are they remote?
A good question and concerns. That was certainly a good one. We talked about providing devices. You know, what does that look like? And being able to have those, right, in the shelters or places where they are, a part of the definition of, also, case you're doubling up, you know, with other family members as well. I see Ajig nodding in terms of our definitions and what we're collecting. So those are the challenges that we're, we're really needing to work with our partners on addressing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Unless I'm missing something, we are concluded. Anything left to do out?
Uh, yes, just committee reports.
Yes, thank you. Academic standards? Anything?
Okay, both Eric and Estella are not here, but I, I'm sorry, the date escapes me, but they just met, like, about a week and a half ago. So I think that's it for the year.
Correct. That's correct, Aldi. We, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Accountability?
Okay, that's Estella's. And again, they met also about a week ago, and I don't know what their next date is. I will have, I will have to get, look that up.
We have one coming up, I think, 16th, accountability. Desi, is that correct? The 16th? Yeah.
Thank you.
Is it focused on a particular district or set of districts, Sharon, or is it?
We're, we're working to finalize the agenda, Chairman Taylor.
Legislation and policy?
We met this morning. And we, we received an update from Melissa and Irene on goal two of our five-year plan, which was very good. We also had a good discussion about moving on, you know, when we are getting ready for our new five-year plan, where all these pieces will fall into place. We also received a presentation on special ed that will be coming to the full board in January. Special ed programs, private, some changes to special ed programs in the private community is what we received.
Look forward to hearing that, or seeing it. Thank you. Legislation and policy?
That's what I just did. I think you're on technical school now.
Yeah, technical schools. I'm, I'm a little slow at this point.
The technical high schools, you know, they're, they're doing a terrific job, given all the, the, the changes that are going on in the environment and the pandemic. I was talking to Jeff yesterday, they were closing this school, or this, all these different things are happening all the time. I'm going to ask Jeff to, in a minute, to do his, a very abbreviated version of his report. But I just liked, we, legislation about the, the special education, and Jeff has, and his team have really done a great job of taking in and reducing the bare special educations coming in. Last, the ninth grade class that came in this year was at 15, 15, over 15% were, had special ed students, which is pretty consistent averages. There's still more work to be done. But he and his, the team has done a great job of really trying to address what's been kind of a stain on the, on the system for a long time. With that, I'm going to just turn it over to Jeff for a quick, a very quick update.
Thanks, Chairman. Thanks, Chairman Taylor. Can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very, very briefly, we're proud is one of our, goal one of our strategic operating plan that I try to share with you a little bit about each month. We had our goal one, which is, is to have a safe, supportive, and collaborative culture. We actually had that audited by the Marzano Research Firm in September and October. And I'm proud to report that five of our C tech schools, Bullard Havens in Bridgeport, Bullard Havens in Bridgeport, Prince Tech in Hartford, Norwich Tech, Ellis Tech in Danielson, and Chaney Tech out in Manchester have been given the designation of being certified as a Level One school under High Reliability School Model. And Level One is a distinction that means that the schools are actually safe, supportive, and collaborative within their culture. And it's, we're proud, because these are the first five schools in Connecticut that have received this, such certification. So we're, we're staying on top of our strategic goals. Just sharing briefly, in our talent management office, we're planning for, continuing to plan for separation as, as the commissioner had term, terms at the, the Texas, I guess he called. as the Commissioner had terms at the Texas, I guess he called it. We're continuing to examine our HR staffing needs, and we requested additional information from, from DAS, and the Talent Office is undertaking this analysis. And we're hoping to have a thorough analysis for the Commissioner soon. We're currently in hybrid model in the majority of our schools. However, Caner Tech in Waterbury, Abbott Tech in Danbury, Bullard Havens in Bridgeport, Platt Tech in Milford, Wolkett Tech up in Torrington, and Wilcox Tech in Meriden are in Phase Three, which is the teachers are in the buildings, but the kids are learning remotely. And these are driven based on quarantining levels of our staff. So, we had, the kids are home in those places because we are experiencing staffing shortages. And last but not least, we're excited because in our state, in our C-Tech Board meeting December sixteenth, for the first time in a while, we will have a fully-staffed board representing C-Tech. So, that's some, some positive news for us. And that kind of concludes my report.
Thank you. How do you do the hands-on aspect of things? Is there any way to do that remotely with kids who are out so much?
It's, it's pretty difficult. The, the trade area work is, fifty percent of the trade is what they call theory, and fifty percent of it is the hands-on modality, where they're actually constructing and applying their knowledge formally. So, we can do the career tech ed theory work if they're home, but it's, it's very difficult for us to conduct the hands-on stuff in some of the trades, particularly the trades that need heavy equipment and so forth. I mean, when the kids are in, they can take some tools and some materials home, but, you know, as you can imagine, they can't bring a CNC machine home, or a lathe machine, or a lift for a car, you know, type of thing. So, there is definitely some major barriers for us that we face when we're in Phase Three.
Thank you. Okay, NASB. Anybody have anything with NASB?
Yes, I do, Alan.
Can you hear me? Oh, because I lost my control panel. Oh, I attended a NASB Office Hours session, and it was attended by state board members from eleven states and Guam. And we were asked to report on initiatives in our states. And I talked about our efforts to increase educator diversity. And there was quite a bit of interest. I asked a lot of questions about that because that's something that many states are dealing with that same challenge. And so, afterwards, I did some research in cooperation with Dr. Tucker and put together a report about all the initiatives that are underway in Connecticut, including at the department and also in the legislature. And we seem to be a leader in this area too. So, at any rate, I sent it to the executive director of NASB, so he could share it with the other people who were interested in this issue. So, as I said, there's a lot going on, and I found it very interesting.
Thank you, Woody. You're flying our flag proudly. Would you like to share that?
Alan, I just have an update for the whole child policy that's part of NASB that I, that I belong to. We've had our third meeting, there'll be five, you know, throughout the year, as you can recall. The last time we had our meeting, there was two major issues that they were talking about that state board should really look at, which we're doing, we're doing both, actually. The first one was really about systems and the concern out there through, there's probably about eight different states represented on this committee, but the concern out there of how we reaching all families throughout the state and not relying on just districts to give us that information, which I know we're already involved in. But that is a huge concern about, you know, making sure that we are reaching out to all families and that we're not relying on just information we receive from districts, especially if they're fully remote. So, that was, that was an interesting topic. The other one was the policymaking with having SEL training, and as earlier, as the Commissioner said, about having national conversations. That certainly was a national conversation because they asked about how Connecticut, they were very aware of the SEL training that was provided, as you recall, to all of our educators by the Dalio Foundation. And I reported out to them that, to date, about, about a week ago, we've had twenty-four thousand educators who have signed up for that SEL training at Yale. So, that's pretty impressive. And they'll send us, they'll send me a final update once they come for the holiday break, because then there'll, there'll probably be a lull of people that will continue. But twenty-four thousand educators certainly took advantage of that. So, that's, you know, certainly was, the rest, all the other states were very jealous that, you know, Connecticut was able to have that.
That's amazing. That's amazing.
Yes.
And that's it for that, for my committee, that's it.
Thank you. CIRK?
Well, we all heard it today, so our last meeting concentrated on that. And you, they gave the greatest update on CIRK today. That was their meeting.
Yep. Okay, is there anything else that anybody wants to raise?
From Charlene Russell Tucker just now, that we're having a webinar on the eighth of December for families, kind of to, to the point that was brought up by board member Benham, around getting information from families. We're, we're on that. And we're going to continue to get better every, every month. I'm pleased with the work that has been done. And I want to just take this moment to thank everyone on the board for your commitment and your passion. You really drive us, you really keep us moving in the right direction. And I hope you have a wonderful holiday season with your loved ones. It's going to be different. But, you know, we're going to get through this. And to the educators and districts that are there, just keep doing what you're doing for our students, because you're keeping them first, and you're giving them an opportunity to be successful. Thank you for what you're doing. So, Chairman Taylor, thank you for this brief moment to be able to address the board and those who are listening. It wasn't our intention to have you fast for this long, so I'm sure you're hungry and want to get to lunch. So, I'll cut it there, but thank you again, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Happy holidays and Merry Christmas.
Yes, to all of you.
Yes.
And a healthier and happy New Year.
Yes, you too, Alan.